Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, July 28th. We are kicking off with a workshop with the Lands and Conservation Commission, and it is my pleasure to welcome Mr. Mike Schwint, the Chair of the Lands and Conservation Commission, who has a presentation and comments prepared for us. Mike, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Mike Schwint, Chair of your Lands and Conservation Commission. Been doing the job for a couple of weeks now, so I'm still working on making sure I get it done right. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on what the Commission and its very active subcommittees have been working on the past year as well as what we plan to do in the upcoming year. First of all, we appreciate the financial support you have provided. We believe we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money and have had excellent results bringing in outside funds to supplement the town's support. So far, we've accessed about $168,000 from outside sources, which have been applied in a number of different places. From the purchase of the electric moors to the series of education classes, repairs through the library to reduce the utility costs, and adding benches for weary walkers. In addition to the significant, we had some significant no-cost-to-the-town events occurring. First was a donation of 100 fruit trees to the community orchard. These were donated by Retree America and were planted with donated labor from Enterprise Car Rentals. That's probably about $4,000 worth of trees, so we probably have about 160 trees in the orchard right now. In addition, the collection box from Apparel Impact behind the town hall here, right now, we're on a pace to collect about 35,000 pounds of clothes that are being deflected from the garbage trucks. It was surprising when I called him and asked him how much had been collected so far this year, and they seemed very pleased with the volumes that are picking up back there. Apparently, once a week, they stop back here and just about noon time, plug up the traffic and pick up the stuff, so it's good to have that there. That saves about $2,000 bucks just in terms of tonnage on the garbage. In addition, there's been about $30,000 worth of trees that the Department of Transportation finally put in along I-295 as to replace the sound barrier when they start, when they put that turnout in there a few years ago. Took a little time to get that all done, but it's mission accomplished. We continue to enjoy community support and that people volunteer to serve and actively work, do the work of the various committees. Right now, we have a combined volunteer base of 32 people, of whom a number serve on more than one committee or subcommittees. And we're always looking for more good volunteers. Last spring, I asked the members to provide an estimate as to the number of hours they volunteered during the past year. I was a bit surprised when I added up all the reported hours. It was equivalent to 1.5 full-time equivalent people added to the labor force, even though a number of people did not respond. I thought that was very impressive. The 12-member Commission continues to both manage its responsibilities under the ordinance as well as to maintain our three gardens. Each of the five subcommittees is involved in long-term activities that pretty much absorbs the available volunteer time of its members. Despite that, they continue to slowly pick up more of the tasks needing to be, needing doing in their sphere of responsibility. Having said that, we still need to do more to cover all the things that are assigned to us under the ordinance. We intend to continue providing continued education opportunities to the community, particularly to the next generation. We've got some good activities going on with MSAD, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. As best we can determine, the town owns 61 parcels of land assessed at $13 million plus, $14 million plus on improvements on there for a total of 28.6 when you count the improvements on there. That includes 1,041 acres of forest land, 227 acres of non-forested land, and 23 acres of developed land. That excludes all the lands and properties that are less than ownership. For example, the rights of way, leases, easements, paper streets. We don't have an inventory of those, so it's pretty hard to say. You know, it's part of our responsibility, but we, you know, we just don't have a list of where those things, all those things are. So more work for the future. We continue to be very pleased by the large number of residents and visitors visiting our town's trail systems. With that use, the efforts of our recreational trails Subcommittee has become increasingly important in developing and maintaining sustainable trails. During the year, the recreational trails Subcommittee continues to monitor, maintain, and improve our town's 16 miles' worth of trails. The powerful storms in the spring of 2024 blew numerous trees onto the trails and flooded some of the smallest streams in our parks. After the storms, Trail Subcommittee worked to clear dozens of fallen trees from the trails and repair damage to a couple of bridges. Since the spring of '24, the subcommittees have wheeled 33 yards of gravel onto wet or ruddy section of the town trails. This is what just two yards of gravel looks like. The efforts included 10 yards of gravel along soft and perennially muddy sections of the Yellow Trail in Ryan's Forest, five yards of gravel along a ruddy section in the White Trail in Knights Pond, 14 yards of gravel on the orange, green, and blue trails in Greeley Woods, and four yards of gravel on the trail connecting Farwell Avenue to the middle school. What that doesn't tell you is that in doing all this work, John wore out the wheels on his wheelbarrow, so that's a lot of gravel being moved. Thank you, John. In addition, the Trail Subcommittee built a 26-foot walkway across a wet area on the Red Trail in Greeley Woods. Last fall, the Trails Subcommittee developed and posted new and improved signage at the entrances to all of the trails on the Tuttle Side to Twin Brook. The Subcommittee also worked with the Animal Control Officer to add dog brochures and leash hooks to all the kiosks in town. In addition to the trail surface, the subcommittees worked to keep the trails within the town's overhead and side clearance, up to standards there. We got the buckthorn that was overgrowing the trails and started crowding it out, so those had to be cut back again to keep it clean. And in the cold January weather allows the Subcommittee to get in and clear trails on the very wet, light-blue winter-only trail in Ryan's Forest. Sections of this trail are underwater most of the year and are accessible only during the cold spells. As you may recall, earlier this year, you approved a trail easement through the Greeley Woods subdivision, which will allow us to improve and maintain the current trail. The Subcommittee will continue to look for similar opportunities to obtain easements from private property owners in order to protect our trails into perpetuity. In the coming year, the Sales Subcommittee has some ambitious plans to improve the trails throughout the town. These plans include hardening many additional wet and ruddy sections and greatly improving the Red Trail through the Gottso section of Ryan's Forest. This will greatly likely involve building several hundred feet of walkway through the area. The Subcommittee also plans to look at the possibility of building trails in town-owned properties and open space near the end of Blanchard Road Extension to provide nearby trails for the families in those areas. Finally, the Subcommittee will continue to look for opportunities to expand the trail network and will assist North Yarmouth Parks as it extends its trails around Knights Pond. With the current and future challenges the area may face, our Sustainability Subcommittee continues to stretch our horizons on conservation efforts in the town. Sustainability reports that of the 19 actions on the climate action plans, 14 have been completed and are in the monitoring stage. For example, the energy efficiency of the new school is forecast to be substantially improved from existing buildings on campus. On a per-square-foot basis, the greenhouse gas emissions will be dramatically lower. The project is thus consistent with our goal to design and build new public buildings to a low-carbon standard. Another example, residential heat pumps are being installed at a rate of about 200 per year, thus exceeding our goal of 50% greenhouse gas reduction by 2030 from home heating for all of Cumberland. Of the remaining five goals, our primary focus in fiscal year '26 will be to decrease food waste through composting. With the help of a UNE Sustainability Fellow, we plan to benchmark exemplary activities, evaluate our current approach, and recommend changes to the solid waste ordinance to decrease waste, food waste, to the Town Council. And of course, this is on your agenda for later on this evening. Our invasive Subcommittee is leading the battle against invasive plants infecting town-owned forest fields and roadsides. These efforts are coordinated with Forestry and Natural Resources Subcommittee within the Town Forest, Twin Brook, and Ryan's Forest. During fiscal year '25, the Subcommittee continued inventorying invasive plants using IMAP invasives, attended and hosted educational and outreach events, purchased equipment, continued removal of invasive plants from winnable areas of Twin Brook, Town Forest, and opened a new front on Knights Pond. We have also made substantial headway controlling knotweed along town roadsides, Route 1, and at several locations within the town parcels. IMAP invasives provides the much-needed documentation for identifying infestations, establishing priorities, and measuring progress locally, and also contributes to a statewide database tracking the extent and the spread of invasives. In fiscal year '25, the invasive people attended the Invasive Plant Academy, sponsored by the Maine Forest Service, trained Subcommittee members using field identification of invasive and native plants and also through online education opportunities, hosted several volunteer workdays at Twin Brook in April '25, which included education about invasive plant identification and control methods. In September of '24, our contract with Parterre Ecological Services began cutting and treating patches of knotweed along the town roadsides. Results of the initial treatment have been very favorable with 90% or better kill rates in many locations. Resprouts were cut back to spring in preparation for follow-up herbicide treatment in late summer. Two large patches were added to the scope of work in May, one at the Drown Road trailhead by the landfill that's within the Town Forest, and a cluster of patches behind the ballfields at Twin Brook on the Greeley roadside. In a breakthrough development, Maine DOT agreed to apply herbicide to knotweed along Route 1 if the town would do the initial pre-cut this summer. That was accomplished in early June. The Subcommittee has identified Mill Brook watershed as a priority for knotweed control. Several locations along Mill Brook and its tributaries harbor infestations, and knotweed is known to spread by fragments carried downstream. Subcommittee members are working on a strategy based on managing occurrences, starting at the top of the watershed and progressing on downstream. I saw a program that was done, I believe it was in New Hampshire, where they did a similar program. Took a number of years, but they're showing great success in downstream mitigation of the knotweed on there. The Subcommittee's single biggest effort in '25 was planning and implementing a series of volunteer workdays around the paved path and brook loop trails at Twin Brook. Approximately 150 volunteer hours went into cutting and pulling invasives from eight to 10 acres of the forest during April, May, and June. Follow-up work will be needed to maintain and expand the effort. They had some beautiful, for lack of a better word, piles of invasives that were pulled out of the ground, cut off. Turned out to be another problem, but that's beside the point. They really, really cleaned out those areas quite well. Also, infestations at Knights Pond were inventoried to spring and determined to be a high conservation priority. Management began in June with an initial 20 hours of volunteer effort. Some members have adopted sites to work on at their own pace and availability. Volunteers have been cutting and pulling multiflora roses from forest edges on Twin Brooks as well as the Town Forest parcel adjacent to Tuttle Road. You can see some of it right out back at the building here where they've gone through and cleaned out some of the invasives. In fiscal '26, invasives plans to continue inventorying the invasives on the town lands using IMAP invasives, offer education and training opportunities for Subcommittee members, volunteers, and landowners, supporting members and volunteers working on adopted sites, monitoring and treating knotweed in our rights-of-way and other town lands, cultivate the relationship with MDOT for future cooperation on state roads, reach out to CMP about invasive management on their rights-of-way, assess feasibility for getting permits for treatment of invasives in riparian areas, pursuing where feasible. Like any effort to manage living systems, making headway against invasive is not a one-and-done proposition. Gaining and maintaining ground will require a consistent, ongoing commitment of effort along with funds for professional services that can't be performed by volunteers. Right now, we're paying anywhere from $110 to $130 for professionals to do spraying for us under our contracts. We will be developing a multi-year plan, complete with budget and necessary resources, including the potential use of town staff, equipment, and funding to sustain annual gains in areas targeted for management. As previously noted, we have over 1,000 acres of forested land that the Forestry and Natural Resources spent the bulk of the time, has spent the bulk of the time working on primarily in the Town Forest, Twin Brook, and Ryan's Forest. Consequently, we now have approved plans and are dealing with invasive on the three larger forests. In Ryan's, we hired a contractor to begin mulching the larger stands of buckthorn. By using their smaller equipment, the contractor was able to retain the trees we want while getting rid of the buckthorn. Two weeks of mulching resulted in about eight to 10 acres being reduced at a cost of $15,000 so that the surviving invasives can be treated. They received their first fall treatment last fall. In the Town Forest, Public Works continues to mulch the heavier stands and has made good progress against some other load. As in Ryan's, the area that had been previously mulched or treated, some parcels for the second time. We are pleased to see there's some white pine regeneration starting in the cleared area. This winter, the fragmites were cut with the expectation of treatment this summer. Well, they thought they'd get ahead of us again, so we're gonna have to have them cut a second time before we can actually do spraying. I've talked to Chris about getting that, and I think he's got it scheduled for about a week or so out, go back and recut the fragmites down, so when it comes, when it comes time to spray this fall, they won't be too tall, and we can hopefully get a good kill on them. Select areas in Twin Brooks were also treated last fall. These areas, coupled with the hand-cutting by the invasive team members, will help to start controlling invasives at Twin Brook. We again sponsored an open house for larger landowners, including, we invited North Yarmouth landowners last winter. We had about 50 people in attendance, and as I was talking to some of the people, even one person from Connecticut showed up to sit through the sessions with us. I think it was very well-received. I got a lot of good feedback on that one. This past year, the Community Orchard Subcommittee hosted several events that brought the community together to turn our initial plans into reality. together to turn our initial plans into reality. The Cumberland Community Orchard took off in twenty twenty four with our Arbor Day Orchard planting event in May. Many community members came out to help plant over fifty fruit and nut trees, including apples, pears, peaches, cherries, mulberries, and American chestnuts. We were pleased a number of the kids took the opportunity to learn how to plant trees, as well as to enjoy the outdoors. They spent a lot of time climbing up and down dirt piles, which is a good start. The subcommittee held a number of educa, educational events at the orchard throughout the year, such as demonstrating how to use a scythe for field maintenance, as well as educational seminars held at the Prince Memorial Library. The final library talk held in October, which was propagating wooden plants, woody plants without grafting, also included a distribution event for seedling keystone trees, fruit and nut trees. Over two hundred trees were distributed to community members to plant on their own property at no charge. Through a grant from the Arbor Day Foundation, in partnership with Retree Us, as I mentioned before, a second round of planting took place in October, with more than a dozen volunteers from Enterprise Rent-A-Car conducting a community service day to plant the trees. In addition to the planting, all the trees were protected with the individual welded wire fences and mouse guards. I'd like to show a little video of that.
We're going to be planting a hundred fruit trees today, and that's enough to produce thousands of pounds every year for the community. I can tell that this is an energetic group. Before even officially starting, we've got all the trees laid out where they're gonna be. Retree Us is a nonprofit program of United Charitable. We plant orchards in schools and in communities like this to get folks thinking about where the food comes from, to create food for the community, and to do things that directly benefit the environment. This is really a project of the Town of Cumberland and the Lands and Conservation Commission. Then we've got Enterprise and Arbor Day Foundation providing grants, making it happen. Enterprise bringing out a lot of volunteers.
We thought it would be nice to have a space where people could actually come and physically be and learn the hands-on, so we wrote a proposal to the town, we used some town land, and they let us use this land next to the compost and brush dump. And we used some of that grant money to buy our, our first set of trees and planted fifty trees in the spring, and that was the, the first round we planted.
Interbreaking ability is really proud of the initiatives that we've done to really support our community, especially when it comes to tree planting. We want to offset our carbon footprint that we are making, so we started the fifty million tree pledge, and so far, we have planted eighteen million trees throughout North America and Europe.
Impact here locally is just great. Kids can come out here and enjoy, you know, understanding these science and wildlife and trees, and all the work that goes into it, the, the love and care that we need to do to take care of these trees. It's a nice community place where people can come and enjoy it and pick up food they want from the earth.
You get to know people that you work with every day, but when you're outside of the office, you get to know them on a different level, and it just creates a lot of teamwork.
We always run a story challenge, so you tell us where and when to be, and we'll make sure that we get that project done. We're very competitive and driven, so it's really fun for us to be able to put those skills to use in other ways.
So one of our founding values is that we strengthen our communities one neighborhood at a time, so to know that we're making a portrait that's gonna be huge for public quality of life and doing things like that really means everything for the circle of life, so it's gonna be filling a lot of needs, and that's what Enterprise is all about, that's what we're involved in.
One thing that we're achieving today is the largest community orchard in Maine that we're aware of, and perhaps regionally too. Just really exciting to make that happen and keep pushing what's possible.
They planted those hundred trees in less than one day. It's impressive watching them out, watching them out there working like that. We worked to foster connection with, with M S A D fifty-one for educational and community service opportunities. For example, we hosted thirty seniors for, from the National Honor Society in May to assist in adding mulch to the trees and prepping for new planting space. In June, the entire fourth grade came to the orchard to participate in our Spring Fling event, helping to spread clover and low, low-growing wildflower mixes throughout the orchard. I believe last year was a very productive year in that the invasives and community orchard subcommittees added their efforts to the work of the commission and the Trails, Forestry, and Sustainability Subcommittee. Right now, our plate is quite full. Looking to the future, there are several things that will impact us. Management plans will be needed, are, will be developed for Greeley Woods, and also for Twin Brook as part of the long-range plan. These plans will take some time, and I expect the results will be very helpful in charting our future roles with these properties. These plans should be in place for all of the major properties, but for some, if they were ever developed, nobody could ever find them. Invasives, these will occupy our time and consume our funds well into the future. When I say our funds, I mean taxpayer funds, along with our personal funds, because the invasives are pretty much everywhere. And if we don't get them under control, they will keep spreading. That's a given. As mentioned earlier, we need to know what properties we should be addressing, what all is invading those properties, as well, as well as having some idea on how to get them under control. We're, we will be working on an ongoing plan, keying off the invasive plans prepared by our town forester and accepted by the town council. To be, to be successful in the long run, we need to not only clean out our properties, but also get our neighbors to keep from reinfesting our lands. Therein lies the challenge. We do want to take a hard look at reforestation of the cleared areas. If we can grow the replacement trees or find somebody to do that for us, it will be considerably cheaper than trying to buy the replacement plants on the open market. I mentioned the white pine is sprouting, that's a start, but there's a lot of other stuff that needs to be in there in a mixed forest, and you look at trying to find a nursery that's going to sell them to you, they're not cheap. And so Todd and his group is gonna have a real challenge in, in seeing if they can get, grow them somewhere, find a piece of land to do it themselves, or find somebody to do it for us. It's gonna be a challenge. Like I said before, invasives are long-term and are not going to get any cheaper by doing nothing. We may also have the unique opportunity to host a heritage peach, excuse me, pear orchard. If that opportunity bears fruit, we may be asking for access to another small piece of town-owned land for that purpose. It'd be very easy to add heritage apple varieties and perhaps chestnuts. Our land would then be serving as, as a genetics repository, a hedge against adverse genetic loss, a seed bank, if you will. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on what your Lands and Conservation Commission has been working on and its plans going forward.
Questions? Go for it.
Good evening, Mike. Good to see you.
Where were you thinking about this peach orchard?
Haven't got the foggiest idea yet.
All right, that makes it easy.
Peach or pear? Was it pear?
Pear.
Pear. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't know it, but there's probably about thirty different varieties that they consider heritage pears, so long list.
Yeah.
I have a question about the five remaining climate action plan recommendations that are still outstanding. One of them was Broad Cove water quality monitoring. Can you explain how that would work exactly and what we would be looking for there?
If I may, I defer to Denny on that one, he's the expert. Denny?
Sure. We find that the watershed, our watershed from Cumberland runs pretty much down towards where the Hanaford Brothers is, and into the Presumse at that point, and then comes out, so all the water's going in that direction. And what we need to, what we need to find is to what extent herbicides and other kinds of problematic substances are, are getting into the river. That's gonna be a task for the coming year. We've kind of been laying it back a little bit to see what's going on in Falmouth, and they have pushed hard, and you, you found that, you noticed that they ran into some opposition for people who are not all on, on the same page there, so we're not, we're not gonna, we're gonna take our time and learn from their experience, but bottom line is, we, we, all the water's flowing into the Presumse River, it gets out to Broad Cove, and, and Broad Cove is a sensitive ecological area. That's, that's where we are in that, Denise.
And as a follow-up, is it mostly herbicides, or has there been any impact that you can tell from, like, commercial fertilizers or something, or nitrogen?
Fertilizers would also be part of, part of the mix.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, go for it, Billy.
A couple things. Has there been any conversation in the L C C about fertilizer banning, or what are other communities doing as it relates to, like, gas-powered, you know, backpack blowers or fertilizers? Has there been any research that you guys have done related to that?
There's been some discussion at the subcommittee level, again, back with sustainability, but it has not got to the point where the commission itself has, has had much, any discussion on it that I can recall. I know that there's, there's an interest in it, but that right now, I'm looking back to the subcommittee to give us a recommendation before we start going forward in that area.
Okay. The other question I had was, I recall during budget season, I don't have the actuals with me, but that you guys are pretty well-funded right now. Is there any resources we could provide you guys to maybe accelerate any of the invasive management? Just thinking, if we have the funds and the resources, why not put everything towards that, or is that all capitally planned out from your perspective?
For this year, for fiscal year twenty six, with the carryforward funds.
Yeah.
We have, you, you gave us forty thousand this year, and we're carrying, we're using thirty-two thousand two fifty of carryforwards, so we have a total budget plan for fiscal twenty six, a little over seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yep.
If we spend it down, like I figure we're going to, we're gonna be back with, with our hat, you know, your coffee can, asking for donations, because we won't have any reserve left. But at the same time, I did develop a non, fiscally funded, if you will, budget last spring for dealing with the invasives, start the thought process on there, but I never saw it come out as part of the budget discussion. Nonetheless, I, it's relevant, it has to happen, and I'm looking for the information from, from Todd with the forest and for the invasives to give me a plan for dealing with it going forwards as a sustained program, not as a, not as a one-and-done type thing, because if it's one-and-done, we might as well not even do it.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you're anticipating expending most of your, like, of your funds this year during this calendar year, okay? And then who did, the, you referenced, there was something that you submitted for the budget, who did you submit that to? Just so we can track it down.
I'm gonna have to guess it was Chris, but I don't know that for a fact. It's too long ago, it was back in March.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to recirculate that, just so that's on our radar moving into next year, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the note of funding invasives with partnering with M dot, so you mentioned that the L C C does the cutting, do they then come in and foot the cost for the, for the spraying of the, it was buckthorn, or not buckthorn, wasn't buckthorn?
Knotweed.
Knotweed, so does M dot take on the cost for the spraying, or is that something that gets billed back to us?
That is, that, I'm looking for D O, M dot to cover the cost of the spraying. We paid for the cutting. Costs, I think it was twenty-two hundred bucks or something like that, with a separate little contract, but the expectation is the state's gonna cover the cost of the, of the spraying and do, actually do the spraying themselves, or contract to somebody.
Do you know if they're doing that in other communities as well, like, to your point, or to your point? I mean, it, it does, the problem doesn't go away, just because we crossed the line into North Yarmouth or Falmouth, and so is that a statewide initiative, or is it something that you guys reached out and kind of took on your own and they wanted to play ball?
We reached out.
You reached out.
Yeah. Good work on the part of the invasive subcommittee, reaching out like that.
Yeah.
Planting a seed.
I had just one other question on the fertilizer and banning of the herbicides. Last fall, Bailey and I did a walk with Paul Laravee, and we got to see those little white pines regenerating themselves in Rhine's Forest. It was really, really cool to see them, they're adorable. But Paul had mentioned, and this really stuck with me, because I almost, I was sort of shocked that the worst thing that we could do is ban, like, Roundup, because it would basically mean that we don't have any control over the invasives. And what was really cool about Paul, just for the people at home, is that he is so intentional with when he cuts and that, or, or, you know, mows or whatever it is he's doing, and that he's able, if he does it at the precisely right time, he's able to dilute the Roundup, like, right, like significantly, and so it, the, the effects are kind of less harming. So I was just curious, and maybe this is for you, Denny, as you guys are having those dialogues about fertilizers and herbicides, and also, of course, benchmarking what's going on with Falmouth, if you're also looking at kind of what the invasive, what the forestry group is doing as well to make sure that whatever, we don't accidentally shoot ourselves in the foot, right, because of a lack of communication, if that makes sense?
Madam Chairman, we're also looking for, if we can find a biological that's going to do the trick, we'd much prefer that as compared to a herbicide or something like that, because, but at the same time, you gotta balance it, if it's, it's gonna cause more of a problem later on down the road. So you gotta be very careful about bringing, introducing something into the environment, you know? Some, some, some bugs only eat certain plants, and that's fine. Purple loostry, for example, is a, is a good one for that, but...
Denise?
I don't know if anyone knows the answer to this question, but speaking about M dot doing the spraying, do they have a particular invasive's protocol where it is, like, Paul uses, like, the most diluted, but most effective dose? Do you know?
That I don't know.
Okay, just curious if they would come in and potentially, you know, overdo it, not to throw shade at M dot or anything, I'm just curious. Additionally, I know we had spoken about it at one of the orchard meetings, but that was forever ago. I'm just curious if you've heard anything about setting aside an area in the orchard to be a tree nursery, to kind of supplement forestry, or kind of reintroducing things back into the forest to supplant the invasives?
Yep, that's part of what I was talking about, is starting, starting some replacement plants. Todd's got a lot of thoughts on, on that, and he's got the background to get us in the right direction on that, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking forward to what, what his recommendations are, on which, which plants and where, where we can grow them. And again, if we can find someone to do it ourselves, that's one thing, if we can find somebody to do it for us, that's another thing, so, yeah, we gotta do something rather than let the, let the, the, the bad stuff take over again after we cleaned it out.
One last thing. Can you remind me how the, I don't know if it was a workshop or just like an educational session for the landowners with invasives, how that went, if, how well-attended it was, and if you've seen any progress on that?
Oh, that was marvelous. We had fifty people in this room.
That's great.
We invited two hundred and fifty people from, a landowner or property owners from North Yarmouth, plus all the people, larger owners from, from, from Cumberland here, and like I said, had people from, from Connecticut in here, we had people from, from Gray, DeGloster, somehow they got word of it, came down as well, so I thought it went over very well, and I think we had to pretty much shuffle people out the door so we could even... out the door so we could eventually lock up. I know the, the foresters were back here in the corner talking for, for a long, long, long time, and they had a line of people waiting to talk to them. So, it was good. Todd, you want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, I, I think just that the other thing to mention is that it, it was really focused on, on kind of a broad suite of topics. So, invasives and forestry was just one of a, a number of topics there. So, you know, we had, we had Jesse and, and one of his subcommittee members there to kind of answer questions about orchard management. We had Ag, our partners at Ag Allies came to talk about managing your, your fields for grassland bird habitat. So, it was, it was kind of, we tried to have a suite of topics that would capture the interest of, of landowners, and, and I think we, we hit the mark on it. It was, you know, we got really good feedback. And we had a number of our neighboring, our neighbors said, hey, we should, we should partner and, and do one that's in North Yarmouth, and, and could Cumberland and North Yarmouth put on another one of these next year. So, I think we've got a lot of interest to, to kind of do this again, and, and maybe have some more focal topics where we focus on, you know, one specific topic rather than covering the whole thing. So, yeah, I think it was a, it was a success.
Cool.
So, so as one landowner, I've take, I've taken two actions as a result of your talk. This, and I, you know, I mow my five-acre field with a bush hog, and this year I postponed it until the end of July, so that all the nesting birds could, could get gone. And I, and, and lastly, I left open several spots of milkweed, which the monarch butterfly need. And so, I'm, my, it's gonna look a little wacky, but it's gonna have these plots of milkweed here and there. So, it was very informational.
If you check our website, you'll find the program was recorded, and you can, you could see the whole program. Thank you.
Mike, I don't, I don't have any questions for you, but I just wanted to say, A, thank you for all the hard work from your committee, and awesome presentation, a lot of hard work went into it. So, thank you.
No, thank you.
Do you have one more question?
In Bob, too.
Yeah.
Go for it, Bob.
Mike, a just, appreciation for you and the committee's work. I have an opportunity to walk through the fruit orchard every Sunday, and the last two Sundays, talk about game birds in, put up two flocks of turkeys on Sunday mornings, and it's kind of fun to watch them lift off. You wouldn't think that, you know, a bird that spends most of their time on the ground, they can fly that well, but it's, it's kind of fun to watch them. And reacts to the water quality of, of backhoe. It, really, that's, that is the, the indicator of how we are doing upland. You know, it's, it's not that long ago when we had straight pipes running from Cumberland Foreside, sewers, raw sewers running right directly into the bay, and that, that was within my lifetime, and, and we've seen that mitigated, and we continue to, to improve on that. And anyways, it's, it's a great appreciation for the efforts of the committee and all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Denise?
As a homeowner trying to fight invasives, and then I have a giant pile of the brush, is this appropriate to take to the brush dump? Like, does it get to a temperature to where the seeds are killed? Is that a safe thing to do?
Is it an invasive pile?
The pile is of invasives, yes. It is sitting in my driveway.
You know, the, the, I've had this, this discussion about six different ways from Sunday on that. The latest information seems to be, and this is what we're doing out in the, in the, in the lands where we're, where we're cutting stuff off now, where you cut it, you let it lay and let it rot there.
Okay.
Now, you can put it in, I know, if you put it in that one pile of brush over there, some of it gets chopped up and goes to the incinerator, some of it doesn't.
Okay.
The stuff that goes to the incinerator, not a problem. Stuff that doesn't, huh, might be a problem. It might get cooked enough, like, but I can't answer that for sure.
That's good to know. I was curious mostly about buckthorn berries or whatever, you know, and then I've got, was it called, it's like fire bush or something? Looks nice in the fall, but chopped two of those down, and they have a ton of little seeds all over them, ready to go. So, I just got them in a pile. So, I'll just stick them somewhere, I suppose, but...
I was, I was hoping we could find somebody that wanted to have a bonfire like it high school used to do
Right, bring your invasives.
when I was a kid. You know, we could haul the stuff up there, throw it on top, and get a weenie out or something, but...
Marshmallows.
Marshmallows.
That's good info, thank you.
I just, my last question was whether or not the bobolinks were back this year.
Were the bobolinks back?
Yes, we went out with...
They were back, yes. And, and Sally Stockwell and I went out with the biologist from Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, so that he could teach us the monitoring protocol, and Joe was his name, and, and he was shocked at how many nesting pairs of bobolinks we had. So, we, we had far more than he expected we would have. And just looking at the easiest fields to, to cover at Twinbrook, we had probably double the number that he thought we would have, and we didn't even get back to some of the backfields. So, yeah.
That's really cool.
They were back.
That's awesome.
They, they love, they love Twinbrook.
We love having them.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Um, well, just to echo Counselor Mahalik, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. This was wonderful. I'm hoping we could maybe do another forest walk in the, in the fall. Awesome, getting a thumbs up there. So, that would be great, and thank you all so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a brief ten-minute recess before getting a wiggle on right at seven.
We are ready to rumble when our amazing town manager is ready to rumble. All right, awesome sauce. Welcome, everybody. Today is Monday, July 28th, 2025. We had a six o'clock workshop with the Lands and Conservation Commission to hear about some of the incredible work that they're doing on sustainability, invasives, forestry management, the Newtown Orchard, all sorts of good stuff. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the July 14th, 2025 meeting.
I'll give you a motion.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Thanks for supporting me during this meeting.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, unanimous, Brenda. All right, next up is our managers' report. We have a special guest tonight, a legislative update from Representative Christina Mitchell. Matt, would it be okay if you have anything to do after Christina's update? Does that work for you?
That's perfect, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Awesome sauce. Come on up, Christina, welcome. Do you have a potato?
You're not supposed to see that yet.
Oh, sorry.
You're very observant. That's scary. Okay. Hi, everyone. How are you? How's everybody? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and explain about, you know, what I've been up to. I have finished my first freshman regular session. It was quite an experience and I've learned a lot, more to learn, for sure. So, I don't know what all you want me to talk about, so I've found some highlights to focus on. But I will start with the ending, which is, if I don't get to something that you want to know more about, I do coffee at all hours now. Please reach out to me. I'm happy to meet with you and talk to you about whatever and tell you what I know and what I don't know. So, one topic I was gonna touch on is the ESP, the Essential Services Programs. And the reason I want to focus on that is, yes, that's a huge cost in all the school systems, among other programs, but the school systems across the state. So, the awareness of property taxes, which is being driven by the schools in particular, especially by the ESP services. The, there was a bill that was passed at the very end to address this. It came off of the last legislative session, 131st. They had a resolve to study different programs, how property taxes schools were being funded in different states and how they were looking at the services for the disadvantaged students, how they were looking at the property valuation. Because there's a general realization that the model that's been used isn't working. I mean, it's difficult for Cumberland to handle that. It's that much more difficult for many other towns in the state. So, the 131st legislative session put in a bill to study certain elements, the property valuation, the mechanisms other states are using to fund their schools, and states' ability to fund the teachers and the staff, among other things. I just grabbed some highlights. And they had to report out this spring to this 132nd legislative session. So, we got the report, and after digesting that, a June, a late bill was put in to act on some of the items that they covered, not all of them. So, a bill was passed literally the last day, the second to last day, and the bill is, hold on, I wrote it in the side notes here. The bill is, it's 318, if you really want to look at it, but what it says is, by October of this year, certain districts were chosen to simulate what it would be like for funding their school system if they modified certain factors. For example, making regional adjustments based on cost of living for those areas. If they incorporate other options to define student disadvantages. Because, for example, a disadvantage for a student in the county is very different, like travel, bus options, whatever, than it is for a district like ours. The other factor they were looking at was calculating the regional investment. Instead of just a town investment, but regionally what's being invested and what can be done to collaborate. I was talking with Mr. Vale last week about this. Literally the day after we spoke, the report, the finalized report came in. And I could see there are many other factors that they can study, but in October this year, they're supposed to report back to us, the Education Committee, actually, that I'm on, and tell us what they found through these simulations. And based on that, the next regular session, January to April, May, however long it goes, we could then, if one of these simulations really worked, then we could take the next step and say, okay, well, let's try that across the board. So, I just wanted to be sure I delivered the message that there's an awareness of the property taxes and how it is really difficult for every community. And this is one, among other bills, that's being done to address that problem.
Do you mind clarifying? That was Bill 318, you said?
Yes, so the original one, the original one was in the 131st Legislature. I didn't write, that was the resolve to show you the packet, so you can see exactly what they did. It was quite thorough. So, it's a start. Certainly not going to solve it right away.
And the simulation, that'll run through this fiscal year or?
No, actually, it's really quick. It only goes to October. They have to report out to us.
So then we would hear by January?
That's the thinking, so we can then act on it. My suspicion is that they won't, you know, it won't be that thorough because it's so quick. But they'll be able to report out some, and then maybe just the trend, the trend for this one is working, so why don't we look at this one further? And this one didn't move the needle at all, what it would cost the town, so forget that one. And if the different districts had the same results, then, okay, well, we won't try to change that factor because it's not working.
Okay. Thank you.
And I probably just need to read all this information myself, but this is the first I'm hearing of it, so I'm very curious. When they decided where to kind of pilot this, were they looking at standard, you know, structures, but then also like RSUs?
Yeah.
And things like that?
It was a variety.
Cool.
And I don't know for sure. I'm not on the school board anymore, but I don't think our district was one chosen for that. We're kind of a standout in some ways, so. So, moving on, there were a lot of different, so, one big learning, I mean, I knew this already, but the state is, as many of you know, much more challenged fiscally, financially than many states, certainly New England. So, huge effort to find funding for schools and everything else. There were two particular bills that looked at taxpayer costs, charges, rates. One was called dubbed the Millionaire's Tax. You might have heard of it, might have not. It was 1089. And it was to permanently fund the schools, permanent 55% funding of the schools. It was very popular. I didn't make any friends, and that's okay. I'm not there to make friends, but I did not vote for it. It did not pass. It's been carried over, so it may reappear as a source of funding. The reason I did not vote for it is the word permanent. I'm very worried about the word permanent. That 55% of how much? I mean, that could really just explode. How much taxpayers have to fund, pay into that fund for schools? I mean, I'm a teacher, I'm on the school board, I'm all for schools, but that just seemed like a big ask. There was another tax bill at the same time, and this was my biggest fear, both of them passing. This other one did pass. It's 229, if you're curious about it. And it reorganizes the tax brackets. It adds some higher level ones as well. And it was called the Fair Taxation Rates. And the idea was, though, it will reorganize it so it doesn't hit the middle group so much with taxes. So, are your taxes going up? Yeah, they are, but it's going to be readjusted how it's being done. And the reasoning behind it is Maine needs a lot of money. There's a lot of need. And fortunately, there are other sources of taxes that are going in that will affect everyone. You may have heard about the cigarettes tax, cannabis streaming, real estate transfer tax, which may particularly affect Cumberland. It has to do with extra taxes for any houses sold over a million dollars. So, there's that. So, there is, there is an effort to find other sources for funding. While I'm on the topic of taxes and budget, I will note that we did succeed in passing a biennial budget by the constitutional required date, which was June 18th. Woo-hoo. A little bit surprised, to be honest. We got that done on time, and it passed bipartisan. It actually passed. But while I'm saying that, I will note, which you probably are aware of, there's grave concern that though we were able to balance the state's budget, there is very serious angst about what to do in face of the federal budget that was passed, the bill that was passed a few weeks ago. Maine literally can't backfill all those funds that are currently lost. Will they remain lost? I don't know. The school funding was returned last week, but it's a problem. And I honestly don't know myself where we will possibly find any more money to fund things, and there's going to be some horrible choices that come down the line. Like, do you fund Maine Care more? Do you, which needs more funding, even though we funded it, we need to fund it even more. Do you just not fund the homeless anymore? The schools? What do you do? So, we were told if that passed, that we would likely be called back into emergency session in the fall. I haven't gotten word yet, but they thought that would be very likely, and we just start figuring out what to do. But that's going to be very painful funding. The, for example, the Maine Public Radio lost all of its funding, and that's actually under the committee that I'm on, Education and Cultural Affairs. And we approved their funding. It was the rigor. I mean, like, it always is funded. We continued to fund it, but we actually added some anticipating the cuts. And one concern is, in Maine, they are the main source for any emergency communications. It's the only tower system that can reach the whole state, that can communicate to all of us if there's whatever emergency. So, that was a key reason we made sure they had plenty of funding. But again, we didn't fully fund them. We're not a state that can afford that, and if that funding isn't returned, then where do we get the money? So, on to the good news, on to the other news. I know affordable housing is also a big question and focus in town. So, last time I was here, I did mention that I understood that was going to be a big focus in Augusta, that they perceive it as the, if not first, it's one of the top concerns in the state. And that, to be honest, surprised me because there's so many problems and issues to be addressed, but it makes sense because if people don't have housing, and I'm not even talking about low-income housing, just affordable housing. If people don't have housing, you know, they don't have a stable home, they don't have an address, they don't have a job, we don't have workers, we don't get the taxes. It just snowballs. So, there were probably eight different bills that came through, not all passed, to do something. And it's not just one town. It's across all the towns to do something about the affordable housing. I've got all the numbers if you want, but like, just go over them really quickly. One permits, it simplifies the permitting that's required to do residential projects on infill sites, which wasn't, which was really complicated before. Allowing residential housing to be built in commercial zones. Of course, if that meets all the zoning requirements as set by the municipality, not just random. Another bill that is trying to simplify the complex Maine building codes in order to encourage new construction. Another one has provided funding, actually, to finance housing and community projects across the state. So, those are just some, and those are ones that passed. And like the last one I'll talk about, they were actually, I mean, when I was here last time, you had a plea to be bipartisan. All these, almost all these were bipartisan. There is a very severe need across the state to get housing in their communities. So, there's one I know in particular, because I've heard from some people, LD 1829, that affects the zoning to allow, I'll read it so I get it right, to allow housing on smaller lots and community designated growth areas. And it grants a one-story height bonus for affordable housing, provides training for planning board members. That one, in committee, coming out of committee, it was bipartisan. You have to understand, that's not common. Certainly, Education Committee I was in, there were not many bipartisan, undivided reports. So, that is significant, that that bill in particular came through, supported by both sides and unanimous. So, what happens, I've learned, is that when a bill goes through a committee and it's supported by all sides, and certainly unanimous, it doesn't really get, can be, but it doesn't really get discussed on the floor. And there are so many bills at the end, they typically go under the hammer. What's unusual is they don't go under the hammer in both chambers, and this one did. It flew through the Senate. It flew through the House. So, to answer the question, like, why didn't I give you a heads up? Well, it flew by. It really did. I now know to look more carefully at what concerns, you know, the community. But I talked to Senator Purce about it as well, like, you know, what was that? And she said the same thing. It really was just, it was a latent bill, and then it just flew at the end. And it typically, it's typical for a bill not to be really questioned on either floor if it's popular with both parties, both sides. So, like it or not, that is a bill. Things can always be amended or changed. And it does affect other communities, some communities more than others, but it is definitely here to stay. And the idea is to promote every community to promote. It's not on one town to pass a referendum and have to have the pressure to pass it. It's on every town, even northern towns, to get housing, feed their economies.
I mean, I don't get it. Why do they keep bringing these people in, bring people who have no income, no job, no nothing?
Yeah.
And why don't they start that?
There aren't, there aren't many people. We could talk maybe later. I don't know what people are coming in. The state has very few people moving in.
There are thousands. Have you walked the streets of Lewiston, Portland, all over the place? There's a lack of housing. Why is the State Department bringing people in here by the droves? I don't understand.
I don't understand why you have your information. We could talk perhaps to.
If you guys maybe want to talk offline afterwards, because the folks at home can't also hear. No, that's okay, but people at home can't hear the chit-chat, so I think Christina usually makes herself very available, so if.
Yeah, I understand. I hear your concern. There are plenty of jobs in Maine at the moment, so, housing, no. So, let's see, what else to talk to you about, taxes? Well, I guess that was, there are plenty of other things I could talk to you about. On the lighter side, I went to the county last week, and I know many things about potatoes. If you'd like a Maine potato, they hand out many interesting things, including potatoes. I have so many potatoes now. I was glad I didn't have to fly back. And they have these squishy ones, in case you like, they're great for stress. If any of you board members want one, I can get you a Maine potato. From the University of Maine, explaining how they do the genetic testing, how they do, they test it for fungus. They have to be certified. All the seeds that are coming or going from the state to the fields, the processors. We went all over the county, and I learned a lot about the industry, and it was good to be up there and get to know the people. I was the southernmost, really excited them. I was the southernmost legislator to go on the tour, and they were really pleased to see us, to tell us their stories. So, that was last week, and then this next week is the Blueberry Tour. So, I'm hoping to not get a squeezy blueberry, to be honest. But, yeah, so, plenty of other things I could talk through your whole meeting, but, yes.
Go for it, Bob.
Christina, thank you for coming.
Sure.
A couple of things that you and I had a conversation last week, but just to follow up on. What is it, what is it that you can do for us, for the municipality? So, I've given that a little bit of a thought, and so, we talk about collaboration and communication and working with our communities around us to, because there isn't any more money, and it's, the federal government is going to short us some more. This legislature needs to incentivize collaboration. And that doesn't mean between communities. It means giving the tools to the county government, giving tools. You know, when you sit down, we talk. uh, you know, when you sit down, we talk about essential programs and services. How can we incentivize school districts to join together and share services? Uh uh we need, we need more models of uh uh joint efforts, uh joint purchases, uh uh, you know, education shouldn't be completely different between one community and the next, in fact, it's not. And same thing with the police departments and fire departments and and public works departments. Incentivize sort of the communities and say, oh, if we if we work together to collaborate, the state's gonna give us some money, if you will, but anyways, that's that's what I think the most important part, that the legislature can do for for us.
Yeah. I I would tack on to that, there were actually a lot of bills that addressed what municipalities could and couldn't do. It sort of surprised me, um one of the big disappointments, I would say, for me, um a bill that did not pass. Loc- local control is, I think, is really important, that each community has their say in how they run their town or whatever. Up to a point, obviously. And one of the bills um had to do with it was a double negative, prohibit, it said prohibit municipalities from prohibit, see if I get it right, prohibit municipalities from making decisions about fuel sources. There was another one about prohibiting municipalities from banning weapons in their town offices. I was very disappointed that one failed, because I think that if a community wants to make a decision about that, um regarding their safety, I think they should be allowed to do that, and it failed. So the 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 idea of the state deciding what the municipalities can and can't do, it's it's very live, it's in many other bills, um some passed, some didn't. So yeah.
Other questions?
The only other thing I'm going to add is um there are quite a number, more than I had realized, there are quite a number of childcare programs offered in um outside of the school district here, there are many businesses that are being run, nurseries, you know, pre-K, whatever. And um they very much want to be involved in the process of including them in the school districts, the pre-K. And at the same time, they want to be supported, and they were not given funding or support in the governor's budget originally, but it was restored, it's back in there. However, um you know, you give, you take. So as a teacher, it was very disappointing to me that the um funding for um community colleges um was cut, was ended. It is to be revisited as soon as there is any future monies, that could be a long time. But at any rate, um you know, there's a give and a take, and um at least at the moment, the childcare workers and their programs are are being funded, supported. So you know where to reach me, um anybody can email me, whatever, I can get you a potato if you want one. And thank you for inviting me, I can certainly come back when you want me to.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Is that a good bark or a bad bark?
That we've heard from him.
Approval or?
Love it. Mister Manager, what do you have for us tonight, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a few different updates uh for the council this evening. The first one, to start off with, the ta- trash collection system rollout, and uh we were down after the first week of new automated trash collection system. Uh it generated some significant, I would call it significant, community engagement uh over the over the, uh we received over two hundred residents calls last week, uh averaging about fifty per day. Uh Laura Nuleski and and Chris Bolduc were addressing a lot of them. About half of the general inquiries were regarding cart delivery, as folks were anxious to receive them, so uh those are continuing, and uh get about half of them out in the first week, and they'll hopefully continue that and get it completed ASAP. And also some questions regarding the continued use of pay-as-you-throw bags. And a lot of that was resolved with uh information and reassurance, and uh but we anticipate, you know, those are, uh those are good questions, and I think, you know, staff's been trying to answer them as as directly and quickly as possible. Uh the remaining uh calls that they received fell into really four primary categories. Uh accessory drilling units for about twenty percent of the calls that came in, and it's with residents who have accessory drilling units uh and requested additional carts. And those requests are being handled and through an established process, so they're trying to address those as they come in and are identified. Uh forty percent of the calls that have come in are regarding the carts being too large. And uh many, many residents have requested smaller carts, and we have a system in place to try to accommodate those requests, uh but we have some concern that there there may not be enough smaller carts to meet demand. Uh so we may see some delays as those get rolled out, uh but the need will be met as we as we get along. So they've been working with the vendor to to make that happen. The other question has been, or thirty percent of them have been on carts being too small or requests for additional carts, where that, you know, folks may generate more than can be accommodated by the barrel uh that they have for household waste. So this has been one of the most challenging issues, because residents report that their carts may be too small for their use, and they are requesting additional sets. Currently, they're working on trying to find a process to fulfill those requests, uh but it's leading to some frustration with staff as well as residents just trying to get them in place. With with anything, it takes time to roll out a brand-new program, so there's, there are some growing pains, uh but staff has been trying to address those concerns as they come. Uh especially some folks who are, you know, still continuing to purchase their bags, but feeling that they're receiving reduced service. That's that's a real concern for us, and we wanna try to remedy that ASAP. Uh notably, North Yarmouth does provide additional carts upon request, and uh so that's something that we're trying to reconcile and figure out what that volume looks like. The other item is, uh about ten percent of the calls are concerns of elderly residents with access issues. Some elderly residents, particularly some with longer driveways, are struggling to manage the new carts. It's a, it's a lot to handle. Previously, they could drive their their bags to the curb, and that's no longer feasible unless they leave their carts out there, which is a concern. So staff is working to find a solution to that problem as well. And so we're gonna continue to monitor feedback and try to uh find solutions as they as they do come. Other towns have, you know, North Yarmouth and Falmouth, most notably, close by, have addressed similar concerns, so we're trying to work with them and find what has worked in their communities. Now, in good, positive news, uh baseball success continues in the towns of Cumberland and North Yarmouth. Uh coming off the heels of Greeley winning its state championship this past spring, we are thrilled to share that the Cumberland-North Yarmouth Little League has two state championship teams again this year, which is amazing. The eleven and under All-Stars, they're state champions this year, which is great, and they are now competing in the regional tournament in Massachusetts. And the ten and under All-Stars, who some of you may remember visited us about this time last year, are back-to-back state champions. So they defended their title this past weekend and are going ahead, and for their efforts, they're heading to Cranston, Rhode Island. No better place to be in the summertime, so, uh outside of Cumberland. So we're excited, Whitney's son is on the team, so you may see him again in the near future with his teammates, so pretty awesome, so they're heading to there for the regionals next week. And if you want to he- uh take part in the celebration, a community celebration picnic will be held at Drown Road Fields tomorrow night at six thirty PM. So all welcome to attend and congratulate these outstanding young athletes. Uh Greeley Road culvert replacement, construction update. Uh this has been, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, uh there, we've had some concerns over, you know, getting these culverts done in a timely manner, and we wanna let folks know Spring Brook Farm is open during this time period, and we've tried to work on rerouting so uh patrons can get there. Uh been work, been speaking, speaking with the operator as well, and uh trying to find solutions and keep that moving forward and get this done as soon as possible. Uh the Wendell Brook site, which is the current site that's open, is scheduled to reopen traffic on Wednesday night, as late as Thursday morning at the latest. So that's, that took about a week and a half to get that done. And so the Max Fuel Crossing site, which is the lower, uh lower site, uh is scheduled to begin staging on Wednesday, as they move from locate, one location where they complete it and stage further down the road. Uh they're looking at fir- full closures, uh full closure starting on Thursday morning. And then they're expecting to reopen that and have it fully open by the end of next week. So it's gonna be about a three-week process from beginning to end. Uh so there is some inconvenience, and, you know, we're hoping the weather continues to to accommodate that schedule. The the, they'll stay gravelled for a while, um they'll put pavement in probably towards uh at the end or during the month, later in August, but that won't require, require a full closure. And the guardrails as well will be installed later this summer, so that, again, that can go down to one-lane closure during that time and keep the road open and passable. So we do appreciate folks' patience as we try to complete these critical infrastructure improvements, mu- much of which is funded by DOT funding to help offset the towns, the towns' expense. And that's all I have uh to report on this evening, Madam Chair.
Matt, I I forgot to ask this last meeting. Uh are the culvert crossings wide enough to incorporate uh a bike lane at a future date? Or or a sidewalk at a future date, or will they have to be widened again?
I I think there's plenty of width uh where it where it comes to it. It's it's um, yes, so we should, we should be fine where it comes to that, yes, it's a substantial upgrade from from what was there now. And it's sized appropriately.
So those would be at a later date we would get those, right, or would that be in?
No, that that'd be future.
Future, okay.
Yeah, as the uh, as the town grows its needs into into doing that, but it should be able to accommodate that.
With the guardrails coming in the future, are we gonna place New Jersey barriers or anything on the edge of the roadway?
They'll probably be coned off, uh larger cones for a while to do it, but it's it's not, there's not gonna be a great amount of time between between uh the construct, or the closure to guardrail installation, but it should be following up next, as as we're at the month, uh month-end of July, we'll, we'll see them in August, but it'll just be late, you know, within the next, next four weeks.
A little bit of trivia, and it's not out there yet, but the, we're starting to get the comprehensive plan survey results in, and Greeley Road was cited by far as the road in town where people feel the most unsafe, um which was really interesting. We'll give us some food for thought.
Thank you.
Good news about the widening. Um uh any other questions for Matt before we move on? Um I had one, a really quick one, um just with the, I know they're, they've been tracking the visitation trends for the state of Maine, and we're, I think we're down pretty significantly with our Canadian visitors. I was just curious if there were any dialogues happening, or if we should anticipate any drop in revenue share.
They were, I I think they were very conservative when it came about to making those forecasts this spring. It's uh, it's roughly about the same as we had last year. Uh I haven't received any updates from that, uh but we will uh not spend it until it comes in, kind of thing, it's, it's, you know, as far as its impact on the overall financial well-being of the town, it's not as great as it had been uh historically, like, let's say, twenty years ago. Uh it's still, you know, it's still a million and a half dollars of revenue. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor that on a monthly basis as we do get the distributions.
Thanks. Okay, um next up is public discussion. Uh public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person, rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone here that would like to come up and chat about anything that's not on the agenda? Uh Christina and then Terry.
So I actually have a question, which dovetails nicely. Um so Greeley Road, I think I checked the paving schedule, and it is up for paving this summer, no? Did I read that wrong? And it hasn't been mentioned, so I'm thinking, wow, was that moved?
We're looking at a couple of different options on that, doing some some pavement, uh not the full length of it, but uh because we have culvert work that needs to be done down by uh down by the entrance to Valhalla Road.
Okay.
And but we're looking at the top going down Greeley Road for for a ways.
Okay, great, thank you.
Terry Maloney Kelly, um Maloney's Ridgeway, and Christina, thank you for your update, I think we're pretty blessed here in Maine, or at least I think I am, to have our representatives um not lose sight of humanity. Um and which is really um under attack every day. Um I know that I said in an email I wouldn't bring this up, but honestly, I'm sorry, I'm gonna change my mind. Um and in some regards to, it's a bigger issue, I know it's not, it, so in reference to the big picture, this is one of those things, just adds to the big picture. And it really has to do with the rollout of our new trash system. We are one of the last towns to go onto this system. We missed a lot of opportunities to make sure that our citizens knew what was coming have empathy about the fact that some of them, this just was not gonna work for. When they reached out and asked for help or solutions, um I will personally say I felt almost threatened, because if I didn't continue with the service, it was gonna cost our citizens and me more money. Well, guess what? I didn't have a choice. Physically, I cannot move those bins. And I also happen to live at the end of a quarter-mile private road in which our town has a lot of, because there was a time in our town history in which developments were not brought on as public roads, because it would cost the town to maintain them. Okay. So when I reached out, and it was in June, okay, not right now when everything is happening, and I, and I wanna say Laura, God bless Laura, at Public Works Service, front person that's taking all of these calls, because she didn't even have the right guidance to give citizens when I called in in June and recently. So um we need to start doing better. We need to recognize that you have a diverse group of citizens, and some of us are minorities when it comes to the services or the abilities to pay for the services in our community. Okay? For me, it was a back-ended gift, because my husband and I had the opportunity to give up going out to lunch one day, so that we could now have our trash picked up, not only at the end of our road, but now at the end of our driveway. I'm lucky, we had that choice, right? Am I getting a discount on the service I'm paying for? Absolutely not. Amongst many of the other services in this community in which many of us don't benefit from. But my biggest disappointment was the fact that our community did not get ahead of this, did not understand the impact on all of your citizens, not just a few of us minorities. And I'm sure you regret the fact that Maloney's Ridgeway was one of the mishaps. But this was not well-executed. This is costing our taxpayers money, I don't care what you say otherwise, we all know human resources are valuable. And to have people dropping cans off for vacant properties, and then having them to have to be picked back up should not be happening in our world today. So I need to ask all of you, and Mister Manager, you've been here a year now, you got your feet under you now. I need to ask that you be very comprehensive with every decision that you make about every citizen in this community. And I get it, I've had to deliver many a bad message in my lifetime, because you didn't fit. But guess what? I had empathy, and I offered solutions, even if it meant I wasn't gonna make any money off it and somebody else would. So I really need to ask you folks to really step back. We're in a world where, especially those of us that don't fit the mold, or not the standards that are being directed, we val- we still have value, we matter. I will always fight for my town, and for those of us that struggle, because I'm not going anywhere. And our town needs folks like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Teri. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and chat? Come on up. If you'd just tell us your name and where you live, please.
My name's Keith White, I live on Range Road. I just, I saw, something was posted about a tax hike, and I'm sure there's a couple of people here that saw that as well. And I was wondering if somebody could speak to us.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure. Can you hear me? Normally, I don't need a microphone to be heard.
My age is a little deaf then, I guess.
I feel you. I was just wondering if somebody could speak to us about maybe what the board and the town, the people that run the town, have envisioned for all of us sitting here, and what's to come with the, they were supposed to revalue our homes this year, and then on top of that, maybe increase our tax burden by a couple of percent, which, you add all that together, it could be considerable. And maybe considerable to the point where you might have a roomful of people who aren't real happy about what's going on. So if somebody could speak to that, because, I mean, I don't obviously have the answers, but somebody in here sure does.
So that is an excellent question, and it's good to have a new face. I don't think we've seen you recently. So for, so that exact item, we're going to hit under 25-086, which is the second item on our agenda tonight.
I can get an agenda.
Oh, no, that's okay. Well, you can have mine if you want. But all of the, so all of the items on our agenda, the public has the opportunity to come up and ask questions. So we'll go through, basically, just kind of the order of things, is we will introduce, kind of tee-up the agenda item, we will go into public comment, and then after we've heard all of the public comment, we'll move into council discussion. You are also in double luck because our town manager is a former tax assessor. So he's really, really good at kind of breaking things down to make them digestible. I'm still a student, and Matt is a great teacher. So if that's okay, we're going to hit that at 25-086. So hold on to your questions if you don't mind. And we'll go from there. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on anything during public discussion that's not on the agenda? Come on up.
Shirley Story King, Shirley Lane Cumberland. And I am just, I just had this thought, and I'm going to strongly urge you, the number one question I've been getting is, we still have to pay for the, even the man in my house that does the trash? We still have to buy bags, even though we have these dumpsters? And he had gotten the garage all arranged, and now he's rethinking his model for our trash, because the trash bags don't fit the canisters. I think a little PR push on what our, what we pay for town as, what we pay for trash as a town, which is a million dollars, close to a million, just for dumping fees, right? Nine hundred and seventy thousand, something like that. But I couldn't find the revenue, and I didn't have time to reach out to Helene to find out what the revenue from the bags. And a clearer explanation that the bags are, they really are kind of an equitable way to even the cost of trash out. You know, where one person generates a lot of trash, they're going to use more bags, right? Someone not using as many, not having as much trash or recycling more is going to use fewer bags. But the bag revenue doesn't even come close to covering the costs of our trash. And I think if you had a message, get a message out there, Whitney, anybody, what the dollars are. This is what trash costs in Cumberland, and this is our revenue from the bags. And it's miniscule, but it helps, and it's fair. And that's just a suggestion. Get that information out there, because that's been the number-one question I've had. Thank you.
I think my husband has that question, too. So, lots of people. Anyone else from the public want to come up? Come on up.
Good evening. Dave Noonan, Meadow Lane. Just a, it's a little bit part of the taxes, but I would highly encourage all of those that have never been to a school board meeting around the budgets and things like that to get highly engaged in that process this year. It's going to start soon. I know last year I couldn't beat a very many because of my second job, talking about paying for taxes. However, I'm going to be very highly engaged this year, maybe not work those nights, what have you, to be engaged in that process, just because we always talk about taxes, and it's going to be obviously coming up here tonight. But that's the best way to do something about it, is to be engaged in the process. And it's nice to see a lot of people here about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the planning board. Anyone else? Come on up.
I live in West Cumberland in the new development behind Cop Motors on Faraday Drive. We have some questions about the trash also. Not Toby, he doesn't care. We actually have perfectly adequate trash bins. We have one small trash bag a week. Sometimes it's not worth putting one out, we just save it for the next week. We do a lot of recycling, though. We researched quite heavily, my husband looked at the kinds of trash containers we now have, and he found that they could in fact be used on the kind of equipment that is supposedly going to be used. He spoke with Casella, and they said, yes, we'll pick it up, but unfortunately, it will fall into the truck because it's too small. So there's conflict right there between what supposedly happened by the trash tote manufacturer is saying and Casella. We were told that we could not get a smaller container. One of our neighbors was told, yes, because she's elderly, which I'm elderly, she can get it, but it's an exception, and you have to, this whole rigamarole go through. We were home when the people arrived. They had no clue how many bins they were supposed to deliver. We now have an extra set of bins, because one of our neighbors who uses the private service, which we had originally, some of us opted to have the town pick it up, since we're paying for it in our taxes. We now have this extra set of bins, and we've called Casella, and they do not call us back. And we've also heard from several people who have animals, who raise animals, who need more than one bin, and they're saying, can I have your extra bins? I don't know. I don't know if I can give you those extra bins or not. The other thing that's unique about these bins is it rained heavily, and there's a lot of rain, rainwater on top. They're made very cleverly, so that when you pick up that lid to dump the water, it goes right inside the bin. It goes like this. Very nice. So I would appreciate some clarification about whether we can get smaller bins or not, and how to get rid of the big ones that have been misdelivered. And I think that if somebody had said, oh, the towns are going to have to pay for them to pick it up. Well, if they had checked ahead of time, or if they had some sense, I mean, they were running around asking me, how many bins do you need, and, you know, how many people here in your unit? I said, well, at least two of us, maybe three. So they left three. Well, one of them doesn't use it. I sent them to the president of the HOA to find out for her building, but they apparently had gone along asking people, how many people, I mean, they were lucky to get somebody who was home in each building, so we have extra bins. And I just think that although it was very clear about, put your trash out in regular bins this week, next week it starts, blah, 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 I'm not surprised that people are confused. And I'm a fairly intelligent person, I have multiple graduate degrees, it's not like I can't read or anything. But I'm confused, but why is it that one person is told, yes, if you're elderly, you can get these small bins, but there's a process you have to go through? But others of us are told, no, you can't get them, you've got to deal with this one. I'm not concerned about the pay-as-you-throw bags, because it is a way of equalizing the trash. But people who have, who raise animals, or who have larger families, and they have more trash than will fit, I mean, I've seen in the past 10 and 15 bags out in front of some of these homes, where they either have a large family, or you consider they have a small form. So I just think that, since it has to fit in that bin, because they won't, they will not pick up the bag if it's not in the bin, because there's going to only be one person, and the machine has to pick it up. So I think that a lot of those things were not communicated clearly, and I'm not surprised that there's confusion and anger and resentment. I'm personally conflicted, because, yeah, we could make room in the garage for those two big bins, but why should we have to, if we can get smaller ones?
Are you ready? Come on. Nope, not going there. I think for some of the specific concerns, we'll be able to get our assistant town manager, who's kind of overseeing the operational side of the rollout, to kind of get with you about the bin sizes and what we can do to solve the problem. So we'll be able to address that offline with you as well. Come on up.
Janice Spalding, West Cumberland. I was not going to speak tonight, but I want to counter a couple things, or a thing a couple people have said. Having the green bags is not fair. You can claim it's a use tax, and that a family of four making $30,000 should pay more in trash, because they produce more trash. And $1,250 to $25 for a bag is not insignificant if you're not making a lot of money. It may be nothing if you're making a million. Great. We have no other use tax, and most towns don't. You could say excise tax is a use tax, you don't pay it unless you have a car. But even that, an elderly woman who drives 2,000 miles a year in her $100,000 vehicle pays more in tax, based on presumed wealth, than a guy driving 30,000 miles in a 2,000 Ford F-150, which clearly, more use, more damage to the roads, they'll pay far less, based on presumed wealth. I have no children in the school, I've never had children in the school. I pay for children in school, as I should. My mother is 82 years old, who's cursing me, because I just mentioned her on TV. She's a senior, seniors proportionately use emergency services more than somebody who's younger, or somebody with children. Should they pay more for emergency services? No. It's a greater burden to the lower-income families in this town, whether they have a two-person household or a six-person household, to buy those bags. Secondly, a year or so ago, maybe more, this very body went through all the reasons why we no longer needed the bags. We were told by the former town manager, oh, we won't have those bags, they're no longer needed. It's a revenue, it's passing tax, it is because, let's be honest, you did not want to put it in a budget line and say your tax bill is going up because of trash collection, but it's a tax. And it's disproportionately affecting people who make less money, who $1,250 for a bag of bags, and I can't remember how many are in a bag, it's not a ton, is a big deal. And it should be acknowledged that it's a big deal, and you're passing the buck to residents. And it's a revenue item. I know you are greatly concerned about people like Teri's neighborhood who are opting out, and you're losing that revenue. It's a tax, and it disproportionately affects lower-income families, and it's not fair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak during public discussion? Come on up.
Dennis Karen, Rangers Way. Just a couple of quick comments about the trash issue. One, if we, I had no idea we could get smaller cans, because that's an issue for us. And so to publicize whatever, the size of the, you know, smaller can to the bigger can would probably be very helpful to people. And if there is, you know, some hoops that have to be jumped through to get them, you know, what those specifically are, would also be good to make the, you know, community aware of. Secondly, you know, we also live down a private road, there's five residents on the road, so if we each put out two cans, that's 10 cans, if they need about five feet of space each, that means somebody's got to clear off 50 feet of space on Range Road for those cans in the winter. Is that our job? I'm asking.
Sorry, can you repeat the exact question?
Sure. There's five houses on our road.
Yep.
Two cans per house, that's 10 cans. We need three feet of space between each can. The cans are, according to the instructions, and the cans are probably 30 inches wide, I'm guessing, something like that. So you need about five feet of freebo, or five feet of space for every can you throw out there. So if you've put 10 cans out there, you need about 48 feet of linear space. Are you with me?
So you're wondering if you and your neighbors are going to have to kind of physically space out to make sure that the trucks, like, can physically get them, right?
That's what the instructions say.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm with you.
Right. So my point is, you know, you're going to have, I don't, the shoulder in our road is not, you know, on Range Road, comes and goes. So some places it's okay, some places it's not. So you're going to have a situation where the cans might go over, or they're going to be in the pavement, they're going to be in the road. But in the wintertime, I mean, the plow goes by and takes out our mailboxes. So, you know, what is going to happen to the trash cans that are lined up on Range Road? So if it's plow day, you're going to have probably trash everywhere. So, you know, who's picking it up? Who's, and the other thing is, you're either going to be putting your trash can in the road, or somebody has to go out there and cut that bank back enough to accommodate those cans. So it would be good to know what the expectation is for that, because I don't feel like shoveling 50 feet of snowbank in the middle of winter. So that's another, and there's a lot of private roads in Cumberland, so it'd be good to let the homeowners know, this is, you know, what the expectation is. You can leave your can in the road, you can't leave your can in the road, you've got to push the snowbank back, you don't have to push the snowbank back, you know, those types of things. So.
I think that's a great question, and I would maybe give a suggestion, if this is okay with Whitney and Matt, if anyone has specific questions or concerns, if we could grab your phone number and your email address tonight while you're here, and then we can also follow up with you. I don't know the answer about the op side, unfortunately, kind of wish I did. But if that works for you guys, could we just grab everyone's contact details, then we can follow up on those specific questions. And sorry about your mailbox. Anything else you wanted to hit?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
If it's easier if you'd like to email me directly as well, and send me that information, I'd be happy to.
I can reach you out here.
That was just thinking, that way you don't have to stay here till the end, or whatever's most convenient for you.
I can book the trash.
Awesome, yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, it's me again. Thank you for those of you who have spoken up about this issue, because quite frankly, 30 days ago, I reached out to the town with all of your questions. And we still don't have answers. So what I would like to know is, where in the process are we to answer all of these questions? Because I was told very clearly, no options for a different container, which was why we had to go to a private service out of our pocket. So what might the citizens of this community expect for some answers to all of our questions that take effect on August 4th? Thank you.
Thanks. I know there is just an FAQ that Whitney has been working on that we could probably look to also expand a little bit, because these are some other, they're all really great questions. Sure, Councilor Bill.
Just to respond to some of the questions as a general concept, I live on a private road with, there's six of us. I have my own dumpster, so I'm not part of the conversation, as you will. But I do have an elderly neighbor down at the very end, and so I've been exercising in my mind over the last six, nine, 12 months, how we might facilitate, you know, this. And still, I don't have all the answers yet, and I believe it's a work in progress, because, you know, we have, you know, a long driveway, people don't have pickup trucks to throw big containers in the back. So I think that, you know, I understand the concerns of what your people are talking about, and we're going to, you know, for my own neighborhood, we're going to make something work. I know that it's, some of it's going to be creative. You know, we might have to invest in a trailer or something. I know my elderly neighbor, the three of us have decided that, you know, I'll take it this week, you take it next week, we're going to get your trash out, we're not going to put the burden on you. Not everybody has that luxury of having neighbors that look out for each other, but, you know, I think that there's a recognition that... I think that there's a recognition that, you know, with, as a, as a process, it's a rollout, there's a lot of people that have concerns. I know the town staff has, and it, it will work out, but it will take some time.
Yep, go for it. I know this is public comment, but this is the same, it could help people in the audience as well if we have some answers. Do we have a primary POC at Casella in charge of handling our contract to answer questions and give information that isn't conflicting? Because you can have a small can, you can't have a small can. You have to be elderly to qualify. Like, is there a list of qualifications that they have on paper to authorize someone to have a smaller can? You know, like, this is all very hearsay-ish coming from Casella and people, and I think it's kind of unacceptable for them not to have standards, you know? Or this is what's included in your contract. These are your options, these aren't. And so we can answer questions of community that are standardized rather than them getting a different answer from Casella customer service versus town employees.
Right now, it's probably best to contact Laura at our, at our Public Works, and then she can direct, if there's another contact that needs to go from there. But generally, we want to try to handle it where we can directly. And then if it goes beyond that, we'll either find the answer and, and try to circle back, or if there isn't an answer yet, say, well, we'll have to come back when we do have the, an answer comes to.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. All right. Is there, oh, you're coming back up?
Yeah, everyone's up. Very soon.
I wanted to make another comment. Again, my mother spoke to, came to town office today to talk about the two senior programs. There are two senior offerings this year, the tax rebate, as they call it, and the tax deferment program. The rollout of particularly the tax deferment program has been awful. There's no, there's been no explanation. Somewhere on one of the forums, there's fine print that says you can't participate in both programs. Seems like important information to know. Although this year, I question that, since a rebate should be on last year and a deferment should be on next year, but makes total sense in the future. The deferment program is something, I'm not a fan of the program. I've been very vocal of not being a fan of the program. It's taking a lean on your home, but particularly with revaluation coming up, it's something many, many seniors in this town may have to consider. They should absolutely talk to a financial advisor, not somebody from the town, no offense to the town. But they should be talking to their own financial advisor about their own situation. But the town should be educating about what the program is. I was disheartened when, when, you know, I was talking to my mother on the way here, and she says, oh, our, our tax rate is going down to $14 or so, is what I was told. I'm like, yeah, yeah, your taxes aren't going down with revaluation. Was kind of downplayed of what the impact of, of revaluation could be. And you are absolutely correct. If the town collects a million dollars in taxes, you're still going to collect a million dollars of taxes. You're going to divvy it up way different. And people, she lives on Greeley Road and a house she's lived in since 1964, her taxes are going up. You can't tell me otherwise. Bill Shane told me to my face, they, they would. It's absolutely going to occur. Us in West Cumberland, our, our values have skyrocketed. If you're over the median increase in valuation, your taxes are going to go up. So it's a program that many, many seniors, because a lot of the households that are going to be impacted are those traditional, longtime neighborhoods in the center, Greeley Road, Main Street, Lawn Ave, pick one, that were built in the 50s and the 60s and so forth. And it's a program they probably should consider, but they need the information to do it. Sending a flyer in the mail, here's two programs, with no explanation, is not the way to do it. There should be, I don't even know how many town hall meetings we had at Valhalla about Drown Road project. There has not been one about this program, and yet the applications are already, already out. Is somebody coming in for a meeting about that rebate program and taking, losing their opportunity for next year? That needs to be known. So you need to do a better job of communicating what the programs are, what they entail, what the deadlines are, because I don't believe there is one for the deferment program. One of the questions she asked, which I was shocked at the answer, was can you pay back your loan, your debt early or pay down on it? So your heirs don't have to pay as much, or you're, it's a loan on your home, so you're, and was told no. It gets paid back when, when you sell or you die. Why? If you've got an extra grand sitting around next year, why can't you pay it back? But those questions need to be somewhere, and you need to explain it to seniors in this town, and you need to be honest about the potential impacts to at least a third of this town on what's going to happen with their taxes, which is disproportionately going to affect a lot of longer-term residents, just based on the neighborhoods that are going to increase.
Thank you. Come on up.
Honestly, we did not plan this.
It's why we're here. We're good.
You know, let's just talk about communication. We have missed so many wonderful opportunities, especially for a particular class of our citizens, which really are valuable, and that is our seniors. And we have an active living 55 organization in which we have town staff. And these are the programs, and I do not understand why we are not sharing with these seniors. And like, the good, bad, and ugly. Don't put your spin from town hall on what you think they want to hear, but the comprehensive plan survey, I keep thinking, my dad only did it because I have a computer, and he goes to these luncheons. And I'm thinking, how many folks are at these luncheons that didn't even know that existed? And those are the folks you should be listening to. They're your future if you want to be here in 20 or 30 years. So I think we have a lot of opportunity in our own existence of what we have for staff to be doing a better job. And I, as you know, have offered to help you do that. I am a customer person, and I'm also an advocate. I was one of those folks that you hate to love and love to hate. So thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Bill Young, official resident of Cumberland. Senior Communications Director. This is not about garbage bags, but if I could say anything about garbage bags, having been a former North Yarmouth resident, please review all their emails, posts on Facebook, and any communications at their meetings about garbage, the final frontier. Okay, so what I'm here for is I do a lot of walking in the town of Cumberland, basically heading up towards Knights from Hedgerow. And I would just think that we got to do something about the traffic. Two places that we need to work on the crosswalks are Carroll Lane and the crosswalk, Just Tonight, A Girl Almost Got It, because the crosswalk is not painted so it's visible enough, and neither is it at Carroll Lane. I stand there sometimes for, I don't know, a couple of minutes till I finally walk out in traffic and somebody, I've been yelled at before, and, you know. But it is a crosswalk, and so I think those ought to be looked at. The other one is Hedgerow have a nice couple of speed bumps they put in to augment the official speed bump, but they, they don't do anything. And of course, it's Valhalla traffic, and though the sign at the top of the road says, don't go down this road because it's a residential neighborhood, you know, nobody, nobody pays any attention to that. So, you know, we chase people down to Valhalla and tell them, hey, you know, 40 miles an hour through the speed bumps is not the way to go. And they look at us like we're crazy, but we do it anyway, because I've not ever seen a police department vehicle on that road. And maybe I'm shooting myself in the foot, but that would be nice once in a while, at least kind of, you know, show it. And there's also not supposed to be any large trucks go down there, but they do. And so I don't know. It's not that big a deal, honestly, but it's just the traffic is pretty heavy on that road and, you know, during the Valhalla times. But I definitely think the crosswalks on Main Street should at least be painted a little brighter so that people pay attention to them. Hey, thanks.
Hey, Bill, was it, it was Carroll Lane, and what was the second?
Across from the Dennis office where they put in the new.
Yep. Yep, got it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, I probably could have just emailed this to the town manager, but like, when they do paving on private roads, like down here, and they cover it all with all the tire pipes, like, and the crosswalk actually is almost completely covered now with all that paving that they did from the private road. Who's actually ultimately responsible for fixing that? Just a question to throw out there for, I would think it would be the people from the private road, but that's just my thoughts.
We'll, we'll probably have to repaint that, but it'll, it'll be on us. We did talk to them, especially, yeah, down here.
Yeah, literally right here.
Yeah, yeah, we, we actually talked to them, because after the, the one in Town Center was painted, we said, you guys are going to have to root another way, because otherwise you're going to have to repaint that one as well. And so they did, they were a little bit, they were about, about the tack. You can see it on, on Blanchard Road as well, on the, it's just the tack that they put down in between the binder coat and the, and the finish coat, and that's what marks it all out.
Trails out, yeah, because that was pretty new, too.
Yeah, yeah. No, thanks, David.
Okay, I'm going to close public discussion. Don't go anywhere. And we're going to kick off with legislation and policy, 25-085, to hear a presentation from Denny Gallaudet and Samantha Ria?
Ria.
Ria, Ria, on a policy recommendation to reduce food waste in the town of Cumberland. Welcome, and thank you for being here.
So I'm Denny Gallaudet. I live on Range Road. I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Committee, a member of the Lands and Conservation Commission. And we have been studying our Climate Action Plan for several years, things we can do to enhance the sustainability of our community. And one that came up and we're studying closely this year is, how can food waste, which we have to pay to incinerate, be reduced through composting? And it turns out, it's, it's a fascinating question, and we were fortunate to be able to attract Samantha Ria, who is a recent graduate of the University of New England, and comes to us as one of their Sustainability Fellows. So we asked her to research the problem, not make any decisions, but just to give you some answers to questions that we had that the Lands and Conservation Commission will be taking under advisement over the coming year to come up with approaches to reduce the amount of waste in town. So Samantha.
Hi, everybody. I know there's some pressing matters on the agenda tonight, but just bear with me, and I'll try and make it as enjoyable as possible. I'd like to start with a little story. So when I was a kid, I remember going out to my grandparents' garden and turning the compost bin. I remember the earthy smell, and I remember getting the vegetables in the afternoon, making a beautiful meal with it, and then going back out to add in the food scraps from the compost pile. And I remember the simplicity of the system and how it's not meant to be complicated, it's more a way of life than a chore. Yeah, in Maine, 40% of food is wasted, and 90% of that food waste goes to landfills where it actually causes harm to the environment due to the greenhouse gas emissions. That's why in 2021, with the Climate Action Plan in Cumberland, they made a goal to reduce food waste through composting. So I'm just going to talk tonight about how it can be not complicated and not expensive either. So as I said, it contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. About 8% to 10% of global emissions come from food waste. That might not seem like a lot, but to put it in perspective, air travel only contributes 2% of global greenhouse gas emissions, so it is quite a bit. And additionally, in Maine, the food insecurity rate is 11%, which is the highest in New England. So this is an issue that doesn't just affect the environment, but it affects community members, too. As Denny said, I am a recent graduate from UNE, and I am doing a Sustainability Fellowship this summer to help Cumberland achieve this goal. The majority of my project had to do with research in Vermont and Maine to find some, to just gather knowledge on the issue and figure out solutions that are tangible and tailored specifically to Cumberland's needs. So my very first recommendation is to implement a food scrap compost pile at the brush dump here in Cumberland. This is the most appealing recommendation, in my opinion, because it keeps the resources and benefits circulating within this community, instead of sending that, those food scraps out to a separate community where maybe these Cumberland residents don't have readily access to that compost. The model I reference in this presentation and in the paper is based on Reedfield-Maines' model. It's very simple, it's low maintenance and cost-effective. It's really just these three, three piles, and the estimated weekly maintenance is only three hours. It's done all in one day, where the food scraps are transferred from the first pile to the curing pile, and then they're aerated, and it's all really done on the tractor. There are issues with some contamination or concerns with contamination, as well as pests, but they can both be mitigated. So contamination such as plastics, sticks and stuff like that can be manually taken out of the food scrap pile before they're added to the curing pile. And then pests like rodents and flies can be mitigated through, like, bird predation and sprinkling flour on the food scrap pile to minimize flies. And another thing with the contamination is, there's the final compost screen where residents can filter out their compost before they take it home. And ideally, it would operate as the brush dump compost operates now, where residents can take as much as they want from the pile, as long as they have the permit. So the goal is really to keep the resources accessible to the community, because the more people that use it, the more people will contribute to it. The second recommendation highlights the importance of education and resource accessibility, which clearly is relevant to the discussions tonight. It's very important that people understand the issue so that they can care about the issue, and a lot of the people that I talked with, from Garbage to Garden to Eco Maine to South Portland Sustainability Team, all emphasize the importance of education. Some resource accessibility examples would be a swap shop, which surrounding, surrounding towns of Cumberland have swap shops. These are places where people can donate and take for free any usable items that they could have disposed of, but they still can get use out of. So it just creates a space to put those materials so they can be used by other members of the community. And to keep it on track with reducing food waste, Cumberland could start by simply promoting kitchenware and food storage. Some resource hubs are places where resources will always be available to community members. Places could be the community food pantry, any local stores, the library is a great place for that, and then the town office right here. And that is just so that everybody can have access to those resources whenever. These can look like flyers, pamphlets, even free compost bins. And then some examples of education materials could be explanations of how to backyard compost, how to read Best Buy labels and nutrition labels, and how to properly store food so that they can last longer. And then one thing that I wanted to do in this fellowship but didn't have time was doing a food recovery recipe newsletter, where you can use, learn to use food scraps that would normally get thrown away. This helps with grocery bills, too, because groceries are expensive, and we just want to get the most out of our food. So an example would be vegetable or bone broth. And then that's a picture of Denny at the, at our farmer's market education booth with a demo of how to backyard compost. My third recommendation is having public food scrap collection sites in Cumberland. Garbage to Garden offers curbside pickup of food scraps in Cumberland for $19 a month, but they also have food scrap collection sites where residents can bring their compost for free as many times as they want throughout the week, and then Garbage to Garden will pick that up and bring it to either their farm or their anaerobic digester in Exeter, Maine, to be turned into renewable energy. This is usually the most convenient option, because they can be put in places where a lot of people travel. And it's, again, it's free to residents, and it's been very successful in the places it's been implemented, like South Portland. It is free to residents, but the cost has to come from the town, so taxpayer money, and that comes to about $1,800 per site per year for the picture here, which is two 64-gallon bins. And then signage is really important, again, because of the education aspect, to minimize contamination and to understand what goes in the bins. And that is 750 if you go through Garbage to Garden, but you don't have to. You can find another way to make that signage that may be cheaper. And that brings me to my fourth recommendation, which is to figure out what Cumberland residents actually want. And that brings me to my fourth recommendation, which is to figure out what Cumberland residents actually want and will use because there's really no point in implementing something that people won't use. It's a waste of effort and time and money. So figuring out if the community compost pile where those resources really stay within this community is preferable over the public collection sites, which may be more convenient. Um, you can still order the compost through Garbage to Garden and get it sent to you, but it's not quite as accessible as having a compost pile right here where you can go to anytime. My fifth recommendation is to find a hauler that does, picks up trash recycling and compost. It would operate the same as trash recycling does now, only with an additional compost bin. Uh, this is kind of a new, it's coming to the area. It's not really available yet in Maine. Uh, Casella is doing this in Vermont where I did some of my research. Um, and they are expected to expand to Maine within the next five years. And then Garbage to Garden is doing a pilot project with Bath Maine right now to haul all three types. So instead of going through a separate entity like Garbage to Garden, that's a separate fee, it's all rolled into one. And then my last one is about an ordinance banning food scraps from the landfill. This is why I was in Vermont mostly, uh, because they, in twenty twenty, they, um, passed a statewide mandate that bans food scraps from the landfill. So I was there talking to different communities about, um, how they are handling this mandate, if it's even been effective, um, and things like that, just learning about it. I'm from northern, northern rural Vermont, so, um, there's many people up there that don't even know that this is a thing. So I had personal experience with how the mandate doesn't always work. Um, so this is kind of a formula for success. If you want to do an ordinance, you have to have that education piece and a way for the community members to oblige by it because if they don't have, um, support from the state or from the town in this case, and resources available from the town, then they can't be successful and we want people to be successful when we do something like this. So I would say that this would be the last step in the process, um, after other recommendations are first implemented and well established. So my main takeaways is that Cumberland is doing really well because of their Climate Action Plan, which they've achieved almost all of their goals for, and that was in twenty twenty-one. So that's really incredible in the world of sustainability. Um, Eco Maine is a great program, um, and a great place to send your trash to because it's an ash landfill, which takes up, takes up a lot less space than a traditional, and it's just a lot more, uh, eco-friendly. And then the curbside garbage to garden is already offered, so that's good too. Um, a future like basic blueprint would be, uh, the public collection sites first as an immediate goal because if you get on that now, then they can be available within the next few weeks. It's very time effective. Um, an intermediate goal would be the compost pile at the brush dump, which could be implemented next summer if you wanted to work on that right now. And then the long-term goal being the three-in-one hauler, which is a long-term goal for many towns in the area, including South Portland. And then all this being said, always prioritizing education and resource accessibility and always considering the input from Cumberland residents. And I don't have a thank you slide, but I do wanna thank Denny for being an awesome mentor and choosing me to work on this project. And thank you to the commission and just everybody that allowed me to do this. I had a really fun time and I look forward to hearing your questions.
Thank you. Questions? Go for it, Bob.
I, I read your whole presentation there the other day and, uh, it was, it came away with a lot of interesting facts that stuck up there. Uh, one of which is, uh, the, the cost of if we were to eliminate the food stream in our tonnage that we take to, uh, that Casella picks up, there's a, could be a substantial reduction in our, in our recycling costs, our, our trash costs.
It's eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, it's, it's not chump change. So, uh, but anyways, and, and I, I was fascinated by the idea of bringing it down on Stiles Way. And, and we already are composting down there on a, on a, on a pretty good sized scale. So my, my, my question is, is it, is it the ability to add the food scraps right into our existing compost pile? Or, or do we, should we be separating it out?
Um, with the brush pile, I think the, um, the horse manure and the brush, they both provide nutrients that are needed for even a food scrap compile or compost pile. Um, the horse manure provides the nitrogen and then the brush provides the carbonic, um, aspect. So really I think that there would be a way to combine it. You need a certain ratio of, they're called greens to browns. So the greens be, being the food, the browns being the, um, brush. And I think that there's definitely a way to incorporate it all together, um, as long as it's the right ratios.
I may have another one in a bit.
This might, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess just my question is right now, what's our, what are we doing? Are we moving on this forward and talking about ordinances or just presentation at this time?
Um, just initial reactions for now, so give us your reactions and questions.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a very good presentation. You did an awesome job putting it together.
Thank you.
Obviously a lot of hard work went into it. Um, I do have one question when I did read your report in regards to the food waste amount and citing the reference to the state report. Is that Cumberland County or the town of Cumberland?
Yeah, I was mindful of that too, because I know that there's the two things. Um, anything that said Cumberland, I took as a town and then Cumberland County, I took as Cumberland County. So if I cited something that was specifically for Cumberland, then it's for the town, as far as I understand.
Okay, all right.
I read through the report and, um, when it did say that Cumberland has the most food wasted, was talking about on the county level, just to clarify.
Okay.
The, the, the information here was just developed at the University of Maine this last year. And they came up with a, a county-wide average as opposed to a town-wide average. And the average resident, uh, has about four hundred and fifty pounds a year of food waste. That's food that's purchased but not eaten. Another fact about that is that, uh, that amounts to two hun- uh, uh, almost two thousand dollars a year that you could have avoided spending if you were smart about, uh, you know, your menu planning and whatnot. So there's a lot of opportunities, I think, to, to help folks, uh, do a better job.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just ready to like dig into some council discussion. I don't have any other questions, but I'll wait in case any others have questions, specific questions, that need answering.
I was just curious for the three piles, um, if there were to establish three separate sites. Um, was sort of the, the expectation is that the residents would then bring their own compost to those piles versus the, like the gar- garbage gardens, which is the curbside, right? Um, in any, I think there was the Vermont benchmarking stuff, like how? I think the elephant is the, the enforcement, right? Like, how are there, is there any information? I think there, someone said that once they started enforcing, like, then people kinda fell in line. But I can imagine that's a really difficult thing to enforce. And so I was just curious as part of your conversations, um, what the strategies were, what, what the tactics were and what the success rate was, if there was.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I spent two weeks in Vermont, uh, learning about this. And honestly, I think it turned into investigative journalism a little bit because, um, there are some towns that just, they have so many issues with it and then other towns seem to be more successful. Um, for example, in a town near me, um, when the mandate first came out, a hauler invested around thirty thousand dollars in infrastructure to start composting at their facility. And then they found that, it, they were assuming that everybody was going to be doing it. And then they found that residents were, um, they weren't doing it and they weren't complying and nobody was enforcing it from the state. Um, so they ended up being not able to provide residential compost pickup anymore, which was a huge shock to them because they really, uh, expected the state to do more enforcement. And the hauler being the middle man kind of, um, where the state was kind of relying on the hauler's information to figure out like who to enforce and things like that. So, um, in that situation, enforcement was not present and the mandate didn't really work. And that is found in a lot of the rural areas where the population is really spread out and things like that. Um, another example is Green Mountain Compost in a more populationally, like population-dense area, um, in like the middle of Vermont, and they have one of the largest composting facilities in New England. And they worked, they collaborated better with the haulers to figure out who to enforce, like with contamination and things like that. And they actually created a policy where, this is specifically for contamination, but it's, it's an example of how enforcement can be successful. Um, they created a policy where they had certain levels of fines for certain percentages of contamination. And they worked really hard to find peop- find the, um, haulers and like the people that were continuously contaminated, contaminating their compost. And, um, so that's an example of how it worked because even just having that policy written helped to, first of all, inform people on why they, why contamination is like bad, um, and the importance of it, but also just to deter it. So I think that there needs to be collaboration between all of the parties involved, uh, to make it work. And it really depends on the community's location and the population, like demographics and density. Um, on the town level specifically, because Vermont is a state level, I think it can be more effective on the town level. Um, but there definitely has to be a plan for how to enforce it and support for the community.
Thank you. Sneeze.
Oh, um, I didn't raise my hand, but I have stuff to say, that's fine. Um, I was curious after reading the report if there were more real, excuse me, world examples of this succeeding. Um, and the only ones I was able to find is if it was a large metropolitan area like New York City perhaps, somewhere in New York. And then also San Francisco, they have, um, ordinances with mandates. But they also have fleets of public servers, sorry, the public works people who go around and they have like the compost cops in New York where they will go to bins on the street and look and make sure that you're not contaminating. And it's mostly, um, they keep landlords accountable for their entire building. Um, so given our workforce, our distributed town, you know, our resources, I, I mean, I'll, you just say it now. Like, I would not support an ordinance to ban, um, food waste. However, um, I think the garbage to garden bins at places around town, maybe like West Cumberland Community Center, Library, Town Hall, whatever, um, would be extremely valuable, especially for people who would not use or do not have it in their budget to pay nineteen bucks a month to Garbage to Garden to come, you know, pick your five gallon bucket up with your weekly trash, which is what our household does. But having those available publicly for people to drop off their waste, I think, could be pretty huge. The only thing is, if it's a sixty-four gallon bin, my household makes like five gallons of compost a week, like we fill that thing. Um, so it just, for the amount of households in Cumberland, I don't know if that would be enough. Um, however, with education and explaining how to make your own compost pile, you know, in your backyard, um, that would help fill that gap. But the thing I like about using garbage to garden is that it's like commercial composting, so you can stick the fats and the bones and all sorts of things in there that you can't do with your household compost. Um, so it's just kind of more of like a set it and forget it situation. So like looking at all the factors in town, looking at our situation, personnel, enforcement, um, and all that. I feel like having those stations using Garbage to Garden to contract out to them rather than trying to find a hauler and that kinda thing would be in our best interest. Just my opinion after reading all of this and digesting it over the last, however long we've had this, since Thursday. But I think it's great. I really love all the data that you compiled here and all the ideas. And I really appreciate it because this is something I've been, been wanting to see for quite a while, is all of this on paper. So, very good project. I think you.
Anyone else? What was that?
Uh, sure. If you, yeah, if you wanna come ask a question, come on up. Uh, if you would do it in the mic though, because.
I was just curious what kind of impact, uh, like garbage disposals have on this whole process, if that was part of it or anything like that. Garbage disposals, what kind of an impact that has on whether this process or any process that has to do with that?
Actually, our colleagues in South Portland have, uh, discussed, uh, looked into this fairly carefully. And, and they, they just, they encourage, uh, people to, uh, go the composting route and not use garbage disposal, uh, garbage disposal, excuse me, garbage disposal, uh, if it's not convenient. Because that, uh, uh, produces a better impact on the environment overall. Not to say that, uh, a garbage disposal isn't a good idea, but compost is, is it even, is an even better idea.
Thanks, Denny.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Um, if we did decide to implement something like, you know, contracting the garbage to garden for some drop-off sites, do we have any area in our current budget to do that or would we need to wait till next year?
Depending upon the cost and the extent, we could potentially absorb it in this year's operating budget. Uh, it may be best if we looked at a further expanded program to look at it as a, as a program offering for the F Y twenty-seven budget.
I mean, the other thing is too, is compost sells for seventy dollars a yard. I mean, it's like, if we're gonna give garden, garbage to garden the raw material, like, you know, they're gonna make profit off of that. So maybe we'll give you some sites and we'll give you some material and don't charge us to pick it up.
For individual households in your subscription, you can request as much compost as you want to be dropped off with your weekly pickup is maybe, do you know if that's something that they offer to municipalities who've contracted with them?
Uh, yeah, there, there's several options that Garbage to Garden offers. But I think that our idea, and by the way, we're, this is not something we wanna present in this budget year. This is, we're thinking about, and the L C C will come forward with some kind of idea proposal, you know, in, in, in some months. Uh, but our, our hope is that a good compost, good composting operation right here in, in Stiles Way will get most of the business from the local community. And households will get used to going there and depositing it and we can mix it right in with the current operation we have at no cost. And so I think what we'd like to do is start up on that route and see how it works before, you know, adding garbage to garden.
Um, I'd just like to add, it was in the paper, but I can just mention it here too, that the Maine D E P offers the Waste Diversion Grants, which, um, they're very willing to give out because they want to support initiatives like the compost pile right in town and even paying for the garbage to garden fees. So that's always an option too, and they do those biannually.
It's good to know. I think having multiple locations is helpful because if, you know, I don't expect someone to drive fifteen, twenty minutes from all the way on the west side to come drop off their compost bucket, you know, at Stiles Way or however long that takes. Um, because it's a pretty decent drive, so thinking about kind of incentivizing it as far as, oh, it's only right here, you know, it's easier this way. I'm already heading to the library or somewhere in West Cumberland that, I guess, the community center, um, is town-owned. But I think in your paper or your write-up, you had mentioned kind of like a multi-pronged approach to be the most successful. So I think that's a smart way to go about it.
I'm with you with multiple locations, but also if we just, if we can outsource all this and we don't have to put the burden on our employees, especially if we can negotiate a, deal with them, that's, that'd be my preference.
I would just think on the education side of things, which is super important, like I've got a couple, I've got like an earth machine and one of those turny, turny ones, right? But, um, growing up, I, we had a compost heap, right? And so maybe someone like Denny might be willing to go to the library and kind of do, uh, you know, not to step on the library's toes. But, um, that could be a great way for people to learn how to do a low-cost composting in their yard if they wanted to, right? Um, and I don't know if you'd be willing to do that, but, um, that would be kind of a cool thing from an education perspective. Um, super, any other? Yeah, go for it.
Sorry. Um, you had mentioned you didn't have time to do the food recovery bit. Um, and I was thinking, not to, I know, like, Mike told us how the L C C has so much stuff on their plate. But perhaps like a Sustainability Committee item could be to kind of gather up some ideas on food recovery recipes or something like that. And then that could just be put in the crier and it could just be maybe like a recurring thing. Um, maybe every week there's a new idea or something like that. But even though you weren't able to complete that part, there's definitely an outlet there in the crier to put information like that out to the community.
Everyone likes a recipe.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Especially if it's free.
Yep, sure.
Yep, sure.
I support the idea of having garbage to garden sites as well as a composting facility at the Stiles Road facility. We just bought our forty-dollar dump pass. So the problem with taking your food waste down there that I see is, first of all, you need a pass. Secondly, they're only open to the public a certain number of days a week for three or four hours. So unless you want to get up early and make sure that's your stop on the way to work, if you work, or you plan, you know, between eight-thirty and twelve-thirty, those three or four days a week, it's not going to be feasible for most people, I think, to take their, their food waste there. We can gather our, our gardening debris and our brush and things, and that's, that's a major thing. And we, we know we're gonna gather that and save it and then make a trip every couple of weeks. When I lived in Scarborough up until four years, five years ago, Scarborough had one central place where you could drop off your excess recyclables, your trash if you missed your trash collection or it didn't fit in your bin, and you could take food waste. They have four carts for garbage to garden. They're emptied every week for the entire town of Scarborough. And never were we not able to put our trash, our food waste in there. And if you have three or four sites, I know there's one down in Falmouth at the community park. We finally decided to pay for the garbage to garden bin to pick up every week because it got really tedious driving our stuff down to Scarborough to our friend so she could put it in the bins. Even though we see her once a week, it really became an issue. And we were told by Falmouth residents that we could put stuff in Falmouth, but we felt really, we did that a few times, but we felt really bad doing that because Falmouth is paying for that. And I think if you look at a sixty-five thousand dollar reduction in your landfill costs over time for a couple thousand dollars a year per site and possibly getting some kind of grant to help facilitate that. I think it's, you can go any time of the day or night, you know, you don't have to be there when somebody's there, and you can dump the stuff. And again, it takes education because you have to know not to put in plastic or metal, no aluminum. But they do take a really wide variety of stuff because of their composting process, which stuff that you can't put in your bins if you were gonna have like bones and fish skins and things like that, that you can't put in the regular compost because it attracts rodents. And living in a condo community, we would not be allowed to have a compost pile for food. We had an issue just with bird seed that we had to have rat eradication last year. So thankfully, we had a neighbor who was happy to shoot them all for us. But it costs us money to try to get them trapped. And this was, you know, one big burrow. And there were a lot of rats just for bird seed. So the rats are coming out, you know, anytime there's construction, there's a lot of rat problems in, in Portland. So I would encourage you to take that two-pronged approach and have, for those for whom they can get there, if they're going there anywhere, they rush, they don't mind doing the work. I've screened in the compost and taken it home. I frankly am too old to want to do that anymore. I used to compost for years. But it's, it's even hard for me to do the gardening I do now. I don't want to add something else like that. So I would support really seriously investigating that because the, the savings are, are really good. And I also think since we have septic systems in our, in our development, we may not have, we don't have the option of having garbage disposals. Simply is not good for the septic system. So I think a lot of people might find that, especially as they age, that it's, it's a really convenient thing to be able to just put the thing out at the curb or go and take the, the larger, you know, and eat a lot of watermelon like we do. Sometimes it may all fit in there one week, so you freeze it and you put it in next week. That's what we were doing was freezing our stuff in the, in the freezer and then taking it off outside of Cumberland. But I would really strongly support the idea.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on this or council discussion? Yep, sure.
Ross Goldberg, sorry, Ross Goldberg, West Cumberland. So when my wife, Lori, and I lived in Philadelphia, we shopped at the Weaver's Way Co-op. And every year you had to do co-op hours and I was, our volunteer time was on the, the recycling committee. And I got involved in the mayor's something or other, it was a great acronym, I forget what it was, but it really should have been buy-in. Or whatever that, those letters would spell out in words, it should have been buy-in, that, the name of this group. And it was a cost diversion program for recycling, getting recycling items out of the trash stream. And we've, it was mentioned sixty-five thousand dollars. For the food waste. I'm not talking about recycling, I'm gonna transition this all over to food waste. Just hold on to me, start the five hour, the five-minute clock. So the money started to roll into the, to the environment committee. And we had the responsibility as part of this program to distribute it to the, back to the community. And the first meeting that we had, I forget exactly how many hundreds of dollars that we had from this program. But there was only one group that presented. It had to be a community group. And the, the criteria were that you had to do something for the, for the community and it couldn't benefit anyone in particular. And no cash was given out for anything. The, the first group got its money. And the second meeting we had, we have like eight groups that wanted to participate in, talking about buy-in here. This continued and for, for every six months, we had, we were given a check to distribute to the community for buy-in, for the programs that they wanted to do, for their, for their programs in their community. And I say there and I emphasize there, and they really thought this was their program. And the, we had, we kept on having to increase the number of trucks that came to this location because of buy-in. And buy-in happens, you know, first at a penny level and then it moves up the coins into the, into the dollars, the paper money. And, and so that buy-in grew and grew and grew. And there, it got towards the end of the program, our participation in the program, where we had to start curating the number of groups that could participate in the competition for the money. So not only did we have to weigh their programs, we had to weigh the groups before we weighed their programs dynamically in terms of, do we want to allow them to get back from the community what they gave in? So there you go with my five minutes up. So that's what I, that's what I hear happening. There's a lot that was mentioned about education. And I mean, it's all well and good that somebody knows how to do it, but there's gotta be buy-in. It's buy-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final thoughts? Samantha, thank you so much, not only for coming here tonight, but for all of the research and hours and information that you've pulled together. Keep in touch, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Toby agrees. That's his name, right? Toby? Oh, he knows his name. All right, next up, twenty-five dash zero eight-six to consider and act on setting the FY twenty-twenty-six tax rate. Critical, critical item for tonight. I'm gonna punch over to our town manager, who's also gonna take us through a couple of changes that were in the published packet versus some work that he's been doing with the assessor. So Matt, if it's okay, put your assessor hat back on.
Happy to, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As the council received a preliminary, I guess you could say now would be called a preliminary memo regarding this year's tax rate. Town tax assessor Clinton Swett has worked on since, since the, since the spring to book all the new value and bring that online. Council itself went through the budgetary process and approved the budget back in May. The school board has approved their budget as well at this point in time. What the town assessor's job is to do is to look at that amount of spending and then determine the amount of local value that we have and use that amount of value to determine what the annual tax rate is going to be. Originally, Mr. Swett had set, recommended a tax rate of twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents, which would have been a two-dollar-and-twenty cent increase on, on the FY twenty-four's or FY twenty-five's tax rate. I reviewed all the information with Mr. Swett and worked with him over the course of today as well as at the end of last week to look at that and say, okay, what, for what reason did this do this? Because we were not anticipating that level of increase on the tax rate. Or I know my finance director, Helene, Debar Tolomeo, and myself were, were not anticipating that and neither was the council. So looking at what may have changed between now and then, part of it was based on, there wasn't as much value that was booked between last year's assessment and this year's assessment. Part of that is due, and it was mentioned earlier this evening, was the town's ratio or the relationship between its assessments to market value. The town's currently assessing properties at just above half of what they're worth on the market. So it's about a fifty, a little over fifty percent is what they're being assessed at. Meaning that if a house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, it's being assessed at roughly fifty-four thousand dollars. That in itself and the way the state law gets applied has different, different parameters that come into. You have to adjust your exemptions by the ratio, which is, you know, for your homestead exemption, your veterans exemption, blind exemption, other exemptions that are there. Those have to be adjusted by the ratio. So instead of, for instance, a twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exemption this year, it was gonna be, it would be less than that because you have to adjust it by what property is being assessed at. So looking at that, it also has to be applied to your personal property. So personal property is another component of what's assessed in the town. So you've got real estate and you have personal property. By applying the ratio, which is required by law, we ended up seeing a reduction in personal property value this past year of just almost five million dollars. Went from fourteen point nine million dollars to ten, basically ten million dollars this year. And that was due to personal property needing to be assessed at the similar level as to what real estate's being assessed at. In addition to that, there was more property that was entered into what's called the Business Equipment Tax Exempt Program. So that is personal property that is in the state of Maine. There are certain qual, certain types of that business property that can be determined to be exempt. Now, since the state made that determination, they have to reimburse the town. But they only have to reimburse you for fifty percent of that. So the town receives that amount. However, that amount increased by five point five million dollars. Last year, the Betty amount was three point two million, and this year it's eight point seven. So that was, was kind of a double impact as that impacted our, our anticipated value growth. We thought we were gonna be close to thirty million dollars in increased value. And if you had, you know, right now, we're about twenty-three million dollar increase. And that, if you had that together, that would have made a significant impact on the overall tax rate. So speaking with Mr. Swett and saying, okay, so we're looking at a ratio of X, a true ratio, there is some, there is some wiggle room within that, that the state law allows. So we were looking at roughly fifty, fifty-three percent. But the state says that you can claim somewhere between forty-eight percent and fifty, fifty-eight percent, fifty-seven percent. So working with Mr. Swett today, I said, let's push this to the legal limit that we can for a couple of different reasons. One is to maximize the impact on, or maximize the amount that folks can get for exemption amounts. So we were looking originally at about thirteen thousand dollars was a homestead exemption. That would increase that up to fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And the veterans exemption was gonna be roughly three thousand dollars and it got it up to about thirty-four hundred dollars. So that pushed that up. It also allowed us to lower the tax rate by twenty-seven cents. So instead of the originally, pardon me, it's kind of a dry mouth. The original forecast tax rate that he was looking at was twenty-five, forty-five. And then after working with Clint today on that, we've come forward with a recommended tax rate of twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Now that, you know, that's roughly twenty-seven cents less. It's still an eight point three percent increase. And that's related to that value change that would, that should have been into play. What this reinforces is Ms. Spalding's earlier comment stating that the town needs to do a revaluation. That really reinforces that. You know, you will see the tax rate drop significantly as a result of that. There's no extra value that comes to the town or no extra income that comes to the town as a result of it. And, and Ms. Spalding's comment earlier saying that, you know, properties that are assessed above what the median change was, they will see an increase. We've got a long ways between now and a revaluation being implemented, but this shows part of the reasoning why, because it impacts our personal property, how that's assessed, how we assess utility properties as well, like gas line utilities, CMP power line utilities, their distribution and transmission system is taxable. That also has to get equalized by the ratio, so that has an impact there as well. So when all of those come back into play, you're looking at a significant change as well as it'll maximize those exemptions. Sort of bring the homestead exemption back to twenty-five thousand and, and veterans back to where it needs to be and so on and so forth. So that's a long way to say ultimately what we've come forward with tonight because the, the spending levels have been approved. And this is really a function of, of a, of a fraction. The top number of this has been approved by both the town and the school board for what their approved budgets are. And the bottom number has, has been finalized at this point in time. So we're looking at, at coming forward with the recommendation for a tax rate tonight for the council to set at twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
Is the county in there too?
Yeah, everything's in there. Yeah, it's, it's town, school, county, the whole, the whole match. The school is roughly sixty-eight percent of your tax rate. County's roughly, I think, four percent. And then the town plus, the, the town is the remainder.
Would you like some water?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I think I've said about everything I need to say on that. But I'm, and I'm happy to say, obviously, to take any questions. So thank you for that.
Perfect. Do you have a question for Matt?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
Matt, when we sat down with the finance committee, our budget committee, and we worked through the process and we, we finally came to a vote, we were under two percent.
Just, just under three.
Just under three, I'm sorry. And that was based on, projections were cumulative, county, municipal, and, and school. So three percent increase over spending over last year. What is the percent of increase on the school side and how much of that is attributable to the bond?
Well, the bond hasn't been put into the tax rate yet. It's, because they haven't gone to bonding yet.
So that'd be next year's, on next year's tax bill?
The next year or the year after, depending upon how they, how they schedule their debt service.
So I think the, the understanding was it was going to add a two-dollar rate for two, two solid years or three solid years. Is that, is that, my memory right there?
I think your memory's fairly accurate, Councilor Vail. I know the school finance, finance team is working on ways to try to mitigate that, but I haven't seen a direct plan as of yet.
That's, that's, that is a substantial increase over, say, a five-year period. And, you know, while I take a little bit of comfort and say that the municipal spending is, we did our jobs, we, we, we were prudent and, but I'm wondering if there is not a, if there should not be a, a review before we take action tonight on our municipal side and compare that against some projections. You know, I'm not gonna sit here and take the blame for what the school does or does not do, or the county does or does not do. But I think that there is a, an exercise that may be worthy to be performed by us taking a quick review and delaying this to our next meeting. I think that we have some positions that haven't been filled and just, I have enough questions in my mind that I would, I would, I would delay a vote tonight and, and schedule a meeting of the budget committee next few days. of the budget committee next few days and look at it, and I think that, and, this is gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money in the next five years.
Let's do, I do want to, so, a couple of questions for Matt, but there are a lot of people here who I also want to give the opportunity to come up and talk, and they've been sitting patiently for a while. So, any other specific questions for Matt before we get into council discussion after we do public discussion?
Yeah, I think, Bob, to your point, I won't get too much into it, but I would like to understand, and Matt, maybe this is something you think about during public comment, or Helene can think about as well, but what is the number we need to hit to be able to make a substantial impact on this number? Because I want to be realistic about what it is that we're trying to achieve versus the result we're gonna get, right? So, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, to be candid, so, I, just some food for thought before we proceed with that discussion, and we can open a public comment.
All right. We'd love to hear from you. Who wants to come up first? Come on up. Oh, Bill, and then Terry.
I'll go first.
Terry, and then Bill.
She was closer.
Thank you, Bill. So, thank you, Counselor Vale, for really wanting to look, take another look. I have a question. So, and it's in regards to the homestead exemption. We have lost some of that, am I correct? And is it because we did not have reevaluation in the timeframe in which the state demands that? Am I correct that we had a timeframe we didn't meet?
That's not correct.
Okay. Help me understand how, as a lack of not having a reevaluation in which has been kicked down the road, eight years at least, to be distracted by other agenda items, and it didn't happen. My concern is, once again, for those minority citizens who depended on that to help them stay here. If I'm correct, was it 25,000 last year?
No, ma'am.
What was it, please?
I think it was around 16,000.
Okay. So, this year, the best is 13.3.
14,250.
When did that just go up? Because that wasn't in, I didn't see that in the memo.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay. So, here's my real point that was avoidable. That reevaluation should have been done in the past five to eight years. That is the responsibility of this council, to be sure that you're taking care of your citizens, and doing your due diligence, as well as the town manager to do their job. And that concerns me, because it is negatively affecting your most vulnerable citizens as a result of us not taking action. And there were all kinds of excuses and reasons. I was part of many discussions with our former manager. But the bottom line is, this is hurting citizens, because we, because our leadership didn't do the job that you needed to do in the time in which you needed to do it. Thank you.
Thanks. Come on up.
Matt, can you?
Just into the mic, and also just your name and where you live, please, sorry.
My name's Keith Light. I live on Ranger Road. Can you kind of explain what this would mean in dollars and cents to somebody who had, say, like, a $400,000 house? Like, what would be, I mean, so this makes sense to everybody. Like, the lady before me, she went on about this homestead thing. That's, I don't know if you understand that correctly, but that's like pennies. Like, if they take $14,000 off your total tax bill, they're not taking 14,000. That's like, it's like pennies. So, I mean, that's, to me, isn't a huge deal. But what does that mean, this hike?
On a $400,000 house?
Like, say, like, is that medium-ish for Cumberland?
It's probably in that range, probably in the 3 range right now. Once you do a revale, it'll grow, obviously, but.
So, what does this mean?
About 700, 750 bucks.
$700 a year on a, on a $300,000 or $400,000 house?
On a 400,000.
And that's next year, and then, the same thing happens the year after, and the year after, and the year after. So, 7, 14, 21. That's, that's huge.
It's a lot of money.
It really is. Now, you talked about the school board and their budget, and whoever else in their budget. If I ran my household, where I went and bought a house, bought groceries, Christmas presents, a brand-new truck, a brand-new car, motorcycle, and then I went and got a job to try and figure out how to pay for all of that, isn't that backwards? Shouldn't we figure out what we have, and then spend what we have, and maybe save a little, so we don't have to have a $65 million bond for a school? I mean, that process seems like far, not, I mean, broke. We should do that totally opposite. Figure out what we have for income, and then spend what we have, and not overspend. It's great to have this and that. It's great to have this school program, or, am I, does that make sense? As, as, I mean, I don't have near the education that you do, but to me, that makes sense to run your town the way you would run your household or a business, if you'd like to flourish. That's all I got.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. You know, Shirley and I sat through every bit of it, and I gotta tell you, I still feel pretty good about what you guys did. I mean, things happen. I get that. They do. But, my question was, and I don't know why this is poking me so hard, but it goes back to the full-time line on the fire department and the per diem line on the fire department. And I know we had, what, four meetings on this, or four discussions on it, and a private meeting about it, and I just, if I could get some clarification on how that, we called it "hope," would work, because I still think that there's, that's a big line, and I still don't get that. I looked at it today, and I just still don't get a 34% increase in the per diem line, and, you know, a little bit increase that got taken back. And, you know, we did get $69,000 taken out of the, out of the lines, but in that whole line of wage, that was quite a bit. So, there's that. The other thing, and I know, you know, went to all, most of the budget things for the school. I talked to a lot of people on my walks, talked to a lady today, and, you know, it all comes down to the same thing when it comes to the school, and I know you, and I know you've talked, and I know when I, you know, we went to the TRICOM meeting, and it was, you know, everybody trying to work together, but everybody really went to their own corners and described what they were trying to do. And I think, I think somewhere in here, you know, really, really, and we, I predicted this back six months ago, that we were gonna go over 25, and we did. And maybe I was lucky. Maybe I just rolled the dice and called it. But somehow in there, this community has to start working with this school department. I have no hope for North Yarmouth. I mean, you guys are gonna have to do it. Those guys are all to lunch out there. But you guys are gonna have to do something, to sit down with the school department and figure this out, because next year, they're gonna pad, they're gonna pad the increase. They're coming up with $800,000 to pad the increase, and the next year after that's gonna be $1,000, a million dollars, to pad the increase for that new school. It's padding. It's your money, it's our tax money, no matter how you look at it, to bring down that double-digit figure that's coming. And it's gonna be real nasty the next few years. You're absolutely right, Bob. Absolutely right. It is not going away, and we do have to run this like our own household. I believe that, too. And I, I don't know. I beat, I beat myself to death on Facebook trying to tell people this. We finally got some people in here tonight, but there's so much apathy in this community, I don't know how you do it. I just, it's the same old faces getting up here, and I get it. I really do. I get it. So, I don't know. My frustration. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Oh, come on up.
Hi, Dennis Karen, Ranger's Way. I guess I'm one of those apathetic people that you finally motivated to show up. And if I heard correctly, there was some discussion about the projection on the tax increase originally being around 3%. Did I? And now, we're 8 and something, so triple the inflation rate, with more large increases to come that could push us near 30, is, well, under the current circumstances, would be near 30. Is that correct? I thought I heard there would be several more years of $2 increases resulting from the bond. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay, so, which put us in the high 20s. So, I think if this had been on the table when the school budget was gonna be voted on, which was a close vote, that there's no way this school budget would have passed. So, it's incredibly, I don't know if I wanna use the word irritating, but disturbing, that these kind of financial decisions are being, are coming about after the fact. I'm not saying anybody, you know, did it intentionally, but again, we probably wouldn't have that $65 million monkey on our back had this information been out there prior to the vote. The school expansion, to me, is and was extravagant. I've read an awful lot about, you know, educational results. It is not based upon the campus, the cost of the campus that the kids go to. It's mostly familial circumstances, and there's study after study after study that say that. You know, kids do well in Cumberland because the parents have a lot of money typically, the kids can get tutoring, they're in intact families, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And there's multiple studies, so it's really, you know, just seems crazy with the school budget being 70% of what we spend, that it was handled the way it was handled. And I guess one question I have is, is there any, any concrete plan to address that issue? Because right now, it sounds like there's a tidal wave of tax increases coming to the people in Cumberland. And if you're making half a mil a year, no big deal. If you're making 50 to 100 a year, that's gonna be painful. So, I think that the process is ignoring that fact. And then I see things like, and I don't know, you know, I read a lot of information, traffic circle in West Cumberland, that would cost the town $2 million a year. Why would that even be discussed when we're facing the budget issues that we're facing? I don't understand it. And a thing that really caught my attention years ago was when we bought the 100-foot ladder truck in a town where the building's height is capped at 40 feet, at a cost of $1.4 million. So, I don't, you know, I just don't get it. I don't, I don't see, you know, any type of prudent review of the spending that's going on. And, you know, we're to the point where, you've got my attention, but I'm almost ready to just say, "Time to sell." Because I can see this is gonna become, you know, when we're employed, my wife and I, sure, we can afford it. When we retire, it's gonna be a different story. So, you know, I, I just find that, you know, what I've heard tonight, when I came in here, I was a little distressed, now I'm really distressed. So, I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Come on up.
Dave Noon in Meadow Lane. All I can say is get involved at the school board, at the schools. These guys have done a pretty good job. I've come to these meetings pretty regularly. They're pretty intact. There's a pretty big, quasi-big movement over the last year towards the school. I mean, we voted on a school a year and a half ago, two, well, two cycles now. The referendum, you gotta vote at the referendum, you gotta go to the school meetings. It's all there, all the money. I mean, 25% increases, I mean, I'm rehashed in the past now, but, I mean, I can't believe it passed this year, and you need to activate. I think getting involved is the biggest way to do it, and I know I said it earlier, that's the biggest weight on our taxes. It's not the municipality, these guys, I mean, there's obviously some things to learn from and grow from, but you gotta get to the school and talk to them, because these guys are powerless over the school. RSU's, they have, you know, and I think Shirley talked about it before, that we have paid for 72% of it compared to North Yarmouth, and we have 67% of the enrollment, I think, are the facts. That stuff needs to be addressed, so there's a lot of things all centered around the school that needs to be addressed. And it is a great school system. My kids have been in it, and my older daughter took, you know, advantage of some of the educational programs, and had, was on an IEP and all that stuff. They do a wonderful job, but they need to rein it in, and we're, you know, these guys are powerless, and honestly, this year, I felt powerless, like throwing in the flag, getting the word out there. You gotta get the word out there and talk to your communities, and get involved with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. You're good. It's what we're here for.
I didn't even think I was gonna make the meeting. Janice Spalding, West Cumberland. First, I want to counter one thing Mr. Vale just said. The council absolutely should take blame for what, some of the blame, for what the school does. Your actions influence theirs, and there are things from what is built-in town, tiff zones and how they're used, to renegotiating the school district cost sharing, to investigating alternatives to the makeup of the district that this body absolutely can control. Part of this town's issue, its biggest issue, is three disparate silos, excuse me, each with their own priorities and none working together, all blaming each other. Stop pointing fingers and fix it. That's not what I came up here to say, but when Bob just, and Bob and I have had many conversations about the school. There is a measure of economic strain referred to as ALIS, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, which indicates households that are above the federal poverty level but not enough to afford basic expenses where they live. Between ALIS and the poverty level are households called below ALIS. Those are households that are forced to make impossible choices, like deciding whether to pay for utilities or car repairs, whether to buy food or fill a prescription. Using that ALIS calculation to indicate economic hardship, which is the cost of housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, technology, and taxes. In Cumberland Center and West Cumberland, 119 households are in poverty. 363 households are ALIS. 21% are below ALIS. In Cumberland Foreside, 146 households are listed as ALIS. 21% are listed as below ALIS on the Foreside. It's important to note that ALIS statistics include employed households only, and does not include retirees or other non-working households. We know in Cumberland, many of those households are struggling. I once again, as I have said numerous times, urge the town to conduct an honest, thorough, and professional survey of residents' financial health, rather than just looking at our incomes. While we know that a large portion of seniors with fixed incomes are struggling in Cumberland, while we know lower and middle-income households in Cumberland, those below the median income, are struggling, the financial strain is being felt across economic demographics, even on the Foreside. Our town's bloated median income does not mean all residents are fine, and we can just dig a little deeper, even many of those above the median line. Towns are not wealthy. Cumberland is not wealthy. Towns merely collect and spend tax dollars from his residents, and meeting after meeting, I've listened, including tonight, I've listened to resident after resident tell you they're hurting and they're scared. Meeting after meeting, I've watched you nod and sympathize, yet nothing ever changes. Council after council, year after year. It's time for things to change. It's time for you to stop sympathizing and actually do something. It's time for things to change, it's time for you to stop sympathizing and actually do something.
Thanks, Jenna. Someone else want to come up and talk?
Susan Bisbings, Bruce Lane. I have some very basic questions, I'm just starting to get involved. The process itself, we voted in June on the school budget. It was $5, is that right? Does anybody know?
I don't have the school.
We don't vote on the town's budget as citizens, is that correct?
That's correct.
But you present numbers to us, and so in my mind, I thought we were like at 7-point-something. And we're at 8.3 now, we were 8.46, what I read this morning, or 9-something.
It's 8.3, Ms. Bisbings.
8.3 now, right.
Yeah.
So, I guess I don't understand if we, we vote on certain numbers and we are presented with other numbers, how we're sitting here tonight with a higher percentage. What's happened? We underestimated, I guess, what was going to be personal property, is that what I heard? And, but the, were we also, do we have an evaluation of the town of 13 billion more than last year? Is that what I read in a memo, or?
Sure, do you want to, would you just maybe clarify when you do your remarks also the budget increase versus, the budget increases from the state, the county, and the town versus kind of how that gets, how you get into that 8.3, I think there's just a little bit, I think it could be a good thing to clarify.
I don't know if you had more questions, I was trying to shake them off down.
That's as far as I want to go now.
Sure, yeah, so, so looking at, so the 8.3% is accumulation of both the school increase, the county increase, and the town's increase. So, it's all combined together. So, it's roughly, I think the town is about 4.3% and the, is where we're at now due to the increase. And part of that increase is due to basically the anticipated growth that we were looking at in the municipal value. So, when you set the tax rate, you kind of make, it's really a big fraction. And it's the total amount between the county, the state, sorry, the county, the school, and the towns.
Right.
Cumulative amount of what the, the net that they need to spend minus any revenues to get to that number. And the bottom number is the overall value of the town that the assessor determines every year. And it didn't grow by as much as anticipated, and part of that was because there were adjustments that needed to take place. And it was primarily on personal property that, that it felt the, the burden of that. So, we had about $8 million less in value than, than we anticipated. And that difference between that $8 million, sorry, that, just that value decrease wasn't enough that it offset that percentage increase that we had anticipated. So, looking at the town, we were looking at about 2.7%. It added about 1.6% to that as a cumulative increase due to that not basically picking up all that extra value or the loss in value.
But the, but the school budget, because we voted on it, that cannot change, is that right? That's binding?
Correct.
Okay. So, who does the projections? Who, who's the person that decides or comes up with a number they think is going to happen? Is it the assessor?
Yeah, usually I'll work with the assessor during the budget season and say, you know, what can we look at for? And, and it's not like, pardon the pun, but it's not like, or the example, but it's not like shaking a magic eight ball. Generally, you look at what your historical trends have shown and what our building permits have shown for growth. What really was the, the X factor on this was the state let us know what our assessed ratio was going to be, and that we had to apply that at that, at that point in time. And it was, you know, from, from last year to this year, for instance, it, the town ratio went from like 60-some-odd percent, almost like 65%, 66%, down to 50, you know, 53%.
But we're going to 57.
Yeah, so we're, but we're trying, what we're trying to do is, I guess you couldn't say get cute, but really, you're getting cute because you're trying to push it to the legal limits that the state allows by law. Say, well, we can add at least another 4% on this because it's allowed to try to help mitigate that impact.
Okay, okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I, I see. I guess my only other, thank you for that explanation. And my only other comment was that I do feel like people are getting a little more involved because 48% of the voters voted against the school budget. So, I think if there was some more level of organization among us as citizens for the vote, that maybe we could do something next June that would wake people up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we do anyone else, do you have a question for her specifically, or?
General.
Come on up, Shirley and then Kim.
So, I'm always trying to simplify this for people to understand. Last year, our tax rate was 23, 25, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And on our tax bills, it said X number of dollars, of those dollars went to schools, X number went to the municipality, X number went to the county. Can you tell us with the new tax rate, I wish I could write it down, or could you project it, what those numbers are of the, for the new tax rate being proposed tonight? And that's all I have for a question.
Thank you.
Then you can look from one category to the next. See where the impact really is.
So, looking at roughly 1706 is what the school tax rate will be. And then the county is 89 cents. And then the, the town is kind of bifurcated in two different areas because you have the TIF amount and then the tax rate amount for the town. The town is $4.37, and then the TIF is applied because that's broken out, and that's $2.86. And so that, and then as far as a percentage breakdown, the, on the, the school is roughly 67.8% of the tax rate. County is 3.5%, and then the town, including of the TIF, is about 20, 28, almost 29, 8.5, almost 29%. You're welcome.
Kim, come on up.
Kim Vine, Valley Road. So, when the, the school did the budget presentation, the estimated mil rate increase for Cumberland was going to be 86 cents or 3.7%. So, kind of off of Shirley's question, what is, what does that look like with the new increase? Is that still the same amount in terms of cents or in just a higher or lower percentage? I'm trying to wrap my head around that piece.
It's, it's going to be a little bit more, it's going to be closer to 5, 5% on the increase, about 1.3% greater than, than where it was before.
Okay, and so, and that's because of the assessed value?
Yeah, it's nothing, it's nothing related to school budget factor, it's, it's related to, it's strictly related to the bottom number and that fraction being less than anticipated when, when Mr. Pullman and I were talking and, and the superintendent was speaking earlier in the year.
Right, and so how, how did you come up with that number then? And is there a way that as the school finance committee, you know, we, we take that, full disclosure, I'm on the school board, when we are looking at the budget, obviously, we have the expenditures, but of course, we look at the income. And when we're told what the mil rate increase will be, that does sometimes affect then we, we might go back to the expenditures. But we were allowing for more income to offset, right, the expenditures. So, and of course, as you know, the process is that state law requires that the school budget be done by a certain amount of time, you work backwards. So, is there a way in the future that we could have a more accurate sense of what, what the mil rate increase will actually be?
I think, yeah, I, to be honest, I, I, I thought we were being conservative when we were originally making that forecast. And losing, you know, double-digit percentage on the ratio really, you know, basically chasing the market had such an adverse impact for, for, you know, really for two out of the three elements of the, of the tax rate. Because the county is, you know, not a lot when it comes to it. But, but of the, of the two primary factors of it, yeah, it, it's, I can't say disappointed is probably the, the most polite word I can use, but I'm not happy about it and was sick about it all weekend. Just trying to think about, okay, how can we push this to maximize it to offset that amount? Just because, you know, you, you wanna, you wanna under-promise and over-deliver. And so that's kind of the way, I think we got caught on it. I haven't seen this much in 30 years of doing this, so it's kind of an anomaly. So, we're pretty much built, built on some soft sand, I guess, not thinking that it was going to diminish that much. So, we're looking at, next year, I think we'll have, well, next year will be a revaluation year. That'll have its challenges as well, but I think ultimately you want to look next year at what the net increase year over year will be for both the town and the school because that number's going to be significantly greater. Tax rate itself will drop significantly, you know, by probably close to half. Because if we're at about 50% of market value, your tax rate should by, by default change by about that amount. So, what you look at next year will be more important for boards and, and councils and select boards to look at, okay, what's my net increase dollar for dollar? So, you look at your gross expenditure minus your revenues and say, okay, what does that net number look at compared to last year? And that'll be a better, a better way to try to gauge it. And then you can look, then you can play with that a little bit on, on tax rates. You can say, okay, knowing that, like what a 3, like let's say a 5% increase would be one year over the next, looking at the current, current parameters or the current paradigm of saying, okay, we know this amount of value and this, and then try to make some calculated risks or some calculated answers to that. But ultimately, you want to look, well, next year will be more important to look at the net change between the budget. But that's, that's an anomaly year, revaluers are different years completely. But other years like this and sliding, sliding times, it's, you know, the value pickup has just been insane in the past, you know, eight years basically. And, you know, should the town have done a revaluation sooner? Sure, you know, I think, I think many towns are in the same, are in the same boat just because the market has changed so rapidly. And now we're trying to keep up with it and that, and of course, there's always concerns about where's the economy going and how's that going to impact long-term, where are you going to, where's the market going to be a year from now? Is construction slowing down, things along those lines? So, there's a lot of elements in there, but right now, it's, you know, we've got the question for us tonight, and a heck of a lot of work to do over the next 12 months.
And?
Sorry, that was a really long-winded answer, but trying to be as honest as I can.
It was very discouraging after all the work we did, obviously. So, yeah, I guess the finance committee will just have to make sure we're working with you as always, so.
No, thanks, thanks, Kim.
Yep, please, Jenna and then, okay. Thanks, Kim.
On the senior tax deferment program, a couple of questions. Can they lock that in now prior to revaluation is my first question. My second question is regardless of revaluation and when they can do that, if households are paying a locked-in rate, the rest is going towards a lien, the town's budget is still the town's budget and still needs to be paid. Does that mean the rest of the households in town are divvying up those costs? Those expenditures, those, those taxes you need to collect, are we paying more? Because you're not going to collect any of those, you're not going to collect any of the deferred loans hopefully for, for several years. And it's going to be a long time before you're collecting more than you're forgiving in, or postponing in a year. So, are we going to see even larger tax bills? I would hope every senior in this town is looking at this program if it's what they need to stay in this town and if it's right for them, and financial advisors tell them to do it. But does that mean the rest of us are going to feel more pain? Because you still have those bills to pay, your budget's still your budget. Who's paying those, those deferred taxes?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, thanks, thanks Jenna, that's a great question. And I, I think that if a person entered into that program this year, you'd be establishing your baseline and then.
Today.
Today, yeah. So, then next year, if it was, you know, let's say your tax bill went from X, you know, let's say it went up by 20%, you'd still be holding your tax bill at roughly there, at your entry point. So, that 20% would be that, that lien amount. Now, depending upon the level of participation, you'd have to look at that and say, okay, it's similar to a homestead exemption. There are those who have homestead exemption and those who don't. And folks who don't have a homestead exemption on their property ultimately pick up that difference between what a person who's enrolled in the program isn't, because there's a local participation amount that comes to paying for that side, for that, let's say, 25% or 30% or whatever it is at the local level that you have. That's a local burden, so that's shift, that is shifted onto there. Now, if you had a significant, like, let's say, 30% of the town entered into that program, then you're going to have to look at that and say, okay, there may be a shift that would have to, have to take place. But not having any data on it, I can't say, but the way you described it, if there was a significant amount of deferred taxes, after a while, you would have to figure out how, how you're going to meet your financial responsibilities or make cuts to offset those. Both would have to be in play, to be honest.
And, yeah, I don't think you can.
There'd be long-term revenue you'd get, you know, plus interest because it'd be setting at the prevailing rate. So, that money, over time, would, would, you know, after it's stabilized, you might find, you know, like I said, most people aren't entering it thinking that they're going to pass away in a year. I mean, but like my mom, she's 86, if her taxes are going up 20% a year, I'd say, you know, you may want to consider that.
Yeah. And I don't think you can answer this today, but in a conversation today, my mother, who's already texted me that I mentioned her, was told that, let's say you've got an extra $1,000 in your budget next month, or next year that you didn't anticipate, and you deferred $1,000 this year, that you can't pay down that debt or pay off that debt as it's rolling. So, that years from now, I may have said this earlier, but as, as your heirs are selling the house or you're selling it because you're going into assisted living and you need the funds or you move into Florida with the grandkids, that rather than waiting at the end and having to pay, here's my big giant tax bill for the last 20 years from the time I was 65 to 85, can they not pay on the debt, which I would assume the town would want because it's funds? But she was led to believe that was not an option and would not, you would not be able to pay on the debt or pay off the debt as you're kind of rolling along.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's accurate.
I wouldn't think so, but that's what she was told.
Yeah, because I mean.
By your office.
If a person wanted to discharge a lien, we're going to, we're going to work with them to do that. It's the same, the same, I mean, if they were going to, if you wanted to offset, I mean, we, we'd find a way to make that work.
Can you work on some FAQs first? And some, like the town halls you had for the, the Drown Road, senior events, bringing in some financial planners, not just town, you know, with your expertise, but bring in some, some senior financial advisors who can perhaps advise people to, to a degree. Everybody's situation is different, but there, there may be some people that it's right for. There's some people it absolutely could be horrendous for, because you may need those funds someday for assisted living or to move to another home down in Florida with the kids. And you might want to think about it, but people should have the best information available. And, and I would say again, I don't believe in the, even though it says you can't participate in both programs, a rebate, the rebate program this year should be on last year's taxes and the deferral should be on next year's taxes. This year, they should be able to sign up for both programs.
I also think you're accurate with that statement.
That's what she was, well, it just says on the form, you cannot participate in both programs. I don't want anybody to think like, oh, I shouldn't do this because I can't get this one.
I think once you enroll in the deferment, then you can't participate. But as you said, the, the rebate is from, is the prior year's taxes, so.
Like next year would make sense, you can't do both, but this year it should be later, next year.
That year before, if you enrolled, then I think that's all fair game. Yeah, I think.
But the line just says you can't participate in both, so I think that's, that may convince some people to not do one or the other. Erroneously.
I would encourage them to, first, first and foremost, if you qualify and you want to get in on the, on the reimbursement program, we're going to be, we're going to be doing that in this, right in the start of August, so.
Yes.
We want folks to do that and, and it's one of the best things. And I was told this by Bill Shane when he started, he's like, it's gonna be the most fun job, that's your fun part of your job you gotta do for the year.
It's a great program and it's, it's not insignificant funds. I'm not sure I'd call it a rebate on taxes if you get five hundred bucks back, but it, it's, it's significant when you don't have a lot of money and, uh, yeah, a hundred bucks is a lot of money. It's, it's significant, it's a great program. It's, it's, I believe more than North Yarmouth pays, um, for a similar program, so it's a, it's a, no, no complaints about that program at all. Um, but I would encourage you to have information sessions, I would encourage you to have them at Hawthorne Courts and one in West Cumberland, whatever, where it's easier for seniors to get to, um, and, and to bring in some outside experts, not just, it's not about selling the program, it's about somebody knowing if it's right for them or not.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if I just put in a plug, and I'm not trying to, to create a lot of extra financial planner, uh, work, but I think each person, like you said, every person's situation is different. My mom's would be different than your mom's or any of them, and uh, I would just recommend that they find someone to give them that advice that they trust.
And once they're in, they can get out, right?
Yes.
Like you have to do it annually?
It's annually, you have to do it annually.
And it's also possible the program could end, correct? Like, like the other tax deferment program did.
I mean.
So explaining what those.
One's an ordinance versus ones, like the, the furl program is an ordinance, and so that's there, so the council would have to repeal the ordinance or dramatically change it so you could amend it, uh, or the, versus the deferral, uh, sorry, the reimbursed program, which is.
Right.
Which is an annual, uh, budgetary function.
But that's also an important consideration for people to know of, if the program didn't continue forever, your, your taxes would do X, Y, Z, or your, your debt would do X, Y, Z as well, so.
Come on up, come on up.
Bill Young Hedger, and this is just to get this out in the open so that, you know, when the questions start coming at me through PMs. Uh, TIF one, okay, so, um, you know, sat in on that, I sat with you, Matt, and, and I realized, you know, I just wanna make sure we bring in eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on this, this thing, and you're gonna extend it, it got voted to extend. And you have the option, um, and this starts in twenty-seven. Is it FY twenty-seven or is it just beginning of twenty-seven, I just?
I think it'll be FY twenty-eight, I think it's calendar twenty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So at that point where we could be in for some real interesting days, um, you do have the option of that one year or something helping out, that money going towards a general fund or part, part of it going, depending on what program you may have going, you know, it's a couple of years from now, right? So, um, you have, uh, the option to defer that into the, that money into the general fund then if it's needed.
Yeah, one, one of the items of that amendment was the ability to throttle that, that TIF, meaning you could take, you could basically lower the amount of that, amount that's captured for the TIF and use it towards the general fund.
Yeah, and so, you know, you and I had this conversation and so that people, and I sat in your office and we talked about TIFs and stuff. So the difference between having it, having all these eight TIFs and putting all that money into the general fund basically comes out to a point-two percent difference. I think that's, is that what I understood? Is that it's kind of negligible between what, what's hidden and what's captured and what's?
It's not negligible.
It's not?
No, it's not negligible.
All right.
Yeah, there's the, if you recall, there was, there was other impacts that were found with that, uh, general purpose aid education was impacted.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and other areas, but uh, it wasn't, it wasn't negligible, like on, for a couple, like TIF one specifically.
Yeah.
It's a huge one, cause it's forty-two million dollars basically captured. Versus it was like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars at point of entry, so that's a significant amount of money.
Right.
Uh, that's there, so, yes, it's, it's not a negligible impact, but having the ability to throttle that at the council level gives the ability to say, okay, in a year that's a, a bond comes on, that's more expensive to help meet the town's fiscal needs, then it's, it can be a significant, uh, help.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there.
No, that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And TIF eight as well.
Yeah, TIF eight and TIF one.
Yeah.
Come on up.
I just have, uh, one quick question, Dennis Karen, Rangers Way.
Thank you.
Is there any concrete plan going on at this time to deal with the school and getting control of their budget in some way, other than what we've been subjec- subjected to at this point, or? I've, I've heard, you know, I mean, basically the school budget gets passed and then we're stuck with whatever it is. I've heard discussions about, you know, we're paying more than our proportionate amount and then the TIFs hide money from the school budget and all that kind of stuff, but it seems like we don't have a lot of leverage over what the school system does.
I think the.
Is that correct?
The, the systems are the systems, right? The processes are currently as they exist, the processes. I think that, um, you know, what I can say, and we have the chair of the finance committee from the school board sitting here tonight, which I think is a really, really great sign, um, and is also someone that I have personally worked very close with, um, as has Bailey, our finance chair, to increase communication. I know, Bill, you said you were defeated earlier, like it's a big word, but, um, I, I think there should be some confidence in the fact that Kim Vine is sitting here, listening to everything and these concerns and that they're very real to her as well. I'm not trying to speak for you, Kim, sorry, um, but knowing that you do take these things to heart. Um, and so there, there's the current way that things are being done. I think there's also, you know, we've heard about appetite to reassess things. Uh, we had some of those conversations with the JSC last year, um, looking at the different funding formulas, um, and I think kind of where it ended up walking away was that it was gonna be looked at every three years or so, or I think we, I wasn't, uh, do, do you recall the cadence, Bailey?
I don't think there was an established cadence on the joint standing committee on next steps. I think that was a conversation we were having to reestablish again, um, if I recall correctly. Bob, do you recall?
There was no definitive, no definitive decided, there was some suggestions made.
Yeah.
Uh, sure, uh, unless were you, did you have anything else to say before?
Uh, well, the other, the only other side comment was, you know, I have this impression because when I see what municipalities do that aren't stuck in a SAD, it seems like they have much more control over, um, school budget than, than the town of Cumberland does. Um, so that's, and, you know, that lack of control seems like a bad thing. So that's.
Yeah, uh, I, that is a way to describe it. Um, uh, it's, it is the current reality that we are in, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be or cannot be looking at other ways and increased collaboration and other structures and formulas. Bob, you have something to say?
I called the state department of education because I was concerned about this ongoing question that you've just brought up. And what we, or I refer to as parity with other communities, in other words, every other community that is not in an SAD or an RSU, they have a poison pen, if you will. And that allows the council or selectmen to basically say, your budget's too high.
Mm-hmm.
Or your budget's too low. They never say that, but more often than not, they say, your budget's too high, go back and sharpen your pencil. The state board of education informed me, you know, and, and set documents that, that is not a tool that's available to RSUs and SADs. So, uh, the conversation we had with our, our state representative who was here earlier this evening, I asked her again to review some of the policies that, that are available or unavailable, that, uh, might give us some more tools to, to answer that question, so, you know, it's, it's a very real concern, you know, and those conversations are, uh, they need to happen, uh, you know, uh, again, uh, I can, I, we all hear you, but you really gotta go over there and, and make them hear you. You know, I'll go with you, but.
You talking about the state legislature?
No, uh, addressing the school board.
Oh, the school board, okay.
And their spending.
Denise?
If I may piggyback onto that, I'm, I agree with Jenna that like I'm tired of hearing, oh, go to the school board, um, I'm gonna take the school board to task, I wanna see you guys do whatever, like, these are our options, do nothing, dissolve, put it to a vote, make it happen, whatever, referendum, or you wait for them to redefine essential programs and services, so we have some relief on funding from the state. Or, and additionally, you can look at the funding formula, so pick a lane, like, I know it's late also, it's almost ten, so I'm probably a little spicy, cause I, it's my bedtime, but like really though, like, I've only been on the council for a year, but I'm tired of hearing it, like, we're always blaming the school, like, do something about it then. Either we can do what we're doing and complain, or you can put it out to voters, or like, just accept the reality.
So is there?
And then work on, working with the school board to make it the best we can, sharing, two towns sharing a school district, like, those are our options.
The, the reasons we don't dissolve are?
Don't ask me.
Anyone?
I, I'm not prepared to talk about dis- dissolving the school district, um, that's, or just not what, what we're here to do tonight and that's.
No, 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 but is, is, obviously the school budget is, is the elephant in the room, and if dissolving the school district is an option that might, that might mitigate that problem, uh, so I'm asking the reasons we don't dissolve. I assume it's not been, it's, it's been looked at, but, and decided against for X, Y, and Z reasons, or have we never looked at it? I, I'm not trying to come up with a radical idea, I'm just saying it affects the taxes, the tax increases that we're now discussing.
Yeah, that is not something I think that we as a council would look or have power to do. We wouldn't be able to say we're gonna dissolve the school district.
No, no, but wouldn't this, the town of Cumberland be the, the entity that would take the first step to say, we wanna dissolve the school district? I realize you might have to go through the legislature or whatever the process is, I don't even know what the process is, but if you can put it together as a, an SAD, you should be able to take it apart and dissolve it as an SAD, and I think Yarmouth, uh, what I've read, has periodically discussed that. Either, well, quote, leaving the, the district.
North Yarmouth?
I think, I mean, north Yarmouth, excuse me, yes.
Um, Matt, you, I, I, I don't know what the process would be for dissolving a school district, uh.
Yeah, I'd be happy, happy to help out some, right, cause the legislative that they set out, it's about a twelve-step process, uh, not a twelve-step program, but a process, uh, that, although you may feel like.
It's probably the same.
You feel, you feel like you've been through it by the time you get done, but it's, uh, you know, it's significant. And, uh, the biggest part that you look at is ultimately, uh, is cost, you know, and if you've got assets that are located in one town, uh, you're looking at having to purchase, buy out the other town. Um, one thing you might remember, uh, is when Shabig left the town of Cumberland, there was a significant cost that, that came with that. Uh, they had to pay off their outstanding debt that they had to the community, that their, their portioned amount, and so they had to pay on that for years. And then there's a whole lot, a lot of other things now, uh, that could come into play as far as the expense of it all. So it's, it's not as simple, quite frankly, as just saying, we wanna, we wanna bail out from it. There's a, you know, there's referendums that have to take place, uh, the different areas that you'd wanna look at and, uh, I guess I've, I've served in both types of communities, like I live in Gray and we're an SAD town and we, we've, we encounter similar questions year in and year out. Uh, cause I once looked at the cost sharing agreement when I was a select board member in Gray, uh, sorry, in New Gloucester, as to how the, how those costs are allocated. And there it's like a fifty-fifty, it's part population and part, uh, part valuation. And school districts have figured that out, and here it's, it's all valuation, uh, valuation based, and towns figure out what's gonna work for them. Uh, whereas I worked in Cape for twenty-four years, almost twenty-five years, and that's a school department, and it comes to the council and the council votes on their budget. Out of the twenty-four years, the council, one year lowered their budget by a million dollars. Other than that, the other twenty-three of them, they send it to the voters, uh, or they approved it until the Baldacci administration, when what they did then was say, okay, now it's gonna go out to the voters, just like the SADs do now. The difference with an SAD is they're gonna hold a district meeting at the, you know, before they set the number, and then the, the, the vote, the vote in June is a validation question when it comes to it, so, um, but generally, you know, Yarmouth next door, they're a school department, the Falmouth is a school department. Uh, and I, I, I think similar track records may be in those towns as well, that the councils themselves did not actually change the school budget. They, they determined and sent it to the voters to, to take final action, cause they feel that they may, you know, at least I've heard the argument that they feel that they're standing in between what the voters ultimately want to do and whatnot. So ultimately it comes down to the voters deciding, um, with what we're looking at tonight, I mean, um, we're bringing forward the tax rate because some of those questions have already been answered, and, uh, what we're trying to do is, is get that done. From, from my side of it, as the manager, looking at it and trying to get the tax bills done and, and get that committed, get the taxes committed, so, uh, cash flows comes in and we can pay our bills and do all that. Ultimately, we're, we're partners with the school department, we're partners with the county when it comes to this, and, you know, they've all done their job to try to get to this point, and what we're trying to do is get that, get that there. So, uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna say here as the manager, I'm not gonna put my woes of the budget on the school department and, and shake a stick and say it's the bad school department that's put, you know, put this math problem into, into, onto my plate, like I was saying, okay, we, we have a problem that we, or we have an issue that we need to solve, which is set the tax rate for the year, uh, so both, you know, so we can pay the school, quite frankly, on a monthly basis, cause they bill us, and we can pay all the bills that the town has and, and, and get that done. But the larger, larger point of a lot of things I've heard tonight are, you know, resonate with us, resonate with me on a daily basis as a professional, cause I've gotta look at it and say, okay, you know, how's this gonna impact? If we tried to come forward with a conservative as heck budget this past spring, you know, we didn't add any bodies, we dropped, we'd actually dropped, dropped some positions, uh, you know, haven't filled some positions, so we've tried to find ways to, to save money on the town side, and that's my responsibility and the council's responsibility, so that's kinda weigh, you know, from, you know, on that, that component. So that's long-winded way of saying that's, that's how we got here tonight, but we, we just need to, we do need to commit taxes so we can get that done.
Yeah, my curiosity, curiosity was just, as you said, I realize there may be a lot of bureaucracy involved if the decision was ever made to try and do it, but has anybody, you know, sat down and said, uh, you know?
What's the cost?
Here's, here's, here's the way I've game it out, here's what I see happening, and either, you know, maybe we take some pain up front, but down the road it's better, or, or vice versa, or whatever, but to at least look at that and try to figure out if it's, it's something to further discuss by evaluating, you know, the financial impact of, of doing it. I mean, if you had a, a partnership and it wasn't going well and, and, you know, and you're in a business, you, one partner might be looking at buying out the other partner, and, you know, same thing, what's the cost and, you know, uh, you know, how amenable are they gonna be to it and all that kinda stuff? But at least I would sit down and say, you know what, you know, what, you know, what's it worth to me? So, okay, you answered my question, thank you.
Sure, come on up.
No, that's okay, I really appreciate you folks, thank you. I think this has been a really productive meeting for everybody who has stuck it out. I just wanted to be really clear, cause my husband reminds me, I don't hear well sometimes. So councillor Thorson, I think you summed it up really well, four options, but it sounded to me like this council does have a tool, if they were to choose to, to do that, to help our Cumberland residents, and that is that cost sharing. And if I heard correctly, I think I heard you say you folks brought it up last year and you've deferred it. So I'm thinking that's a cool tool. I mean, you, you, your citizens need you to do everything that you possibly can to be equitable with their tax dollars. And if there is a contractual obligation or guidelines, and yeah, it's just gone along and it has gone along, well, we're at a critical point. And relooking at that in a month versus three years when Hall, goodness sakes, is gonna break loose with our tax rate. I really need to encourage you folks to do that piece for your citizens. That's a fiduciary responsibility that you have, and I'm really not, it's gone law on way too long that there's been a disparity, so waiting another three years certainly isn't gonna change much, if not make it even worse, uh, for those of us in Cumberland that just really can't afford to pay more than our share by obligation. Thank you.
Thanks. Come on up.
I don't mean to counter Bob again, cause Bob and I agree, I think ninety-nine percent on, on most issues, but definitely on the school, but with all due respect to our. But with all due respect to our state representative, she's the school board member who exasperatingly said. Residents should be thanking the school board for saving them fifty million dollars when they voted down the North Yarmouth school and. Changed plans, and, and we shouldn't be arguing about the turf field. The better option to talk to, that aside, is Teresa Pierce, who is the, happens to be our senator, and, or state senator, and is also the chair of the education committee. There is not a mechanism for oversight i- in a joint district, that doesn't mean you can't create one, we're certainly not alone with having the issues. Gray's having the issues, Wyndham, Raymond, Raymond got their school closed a- against their, their will. Uh, North Yarmouth, i- i- if you don't wanna do the due diligence to figure out what separating might look like, they may do it for you. They voted down the past two bills. How long are they going to put up with, and are towns like Raymond gonna put up with, larger towns overvoting them? And incurring debt for them? We pay a disproportionate, a disproportionate amount of the, the school budget, we pay far more for our students than they pay for theirs, all of that is true. But we consistently overvote them on things that are costing them, them money. Um, there is a mechanism, I've, I've looked into it, Bob and I have talked about it, of leaving a district, many, many towns have done it. Typically, it's the smaller town in a district that chooses to leave, every aspect of the division is negotiable, which is painful. This town has never done its due diligence to, like, nobody is saying, we should dissolve, I mean, sure, summer, we should dissolve the district, we should know what that means. All we've ever heard in the past from the past town manager who actively campaigned against even looking at it was, the sky is falling. Our, our property values will plummet, the education quality will plummet. Um, Cumberland, this was my favorite, Cumberland would owe North Yarmouth, North Yarmouth would owe us one-third of the debt, the outstanding debt. And Cumberland would owe them two-thirds the cost of the infrastructure. We paid for two-thirds of it, plus some of it was already ours, land, buildings, and such, but somehow we are on the hook for two-thirds, none of that is true. First of all, none of it's a formula, it's all negotiable right down to copy releases. Um, North Yarmouth would be in line, any town that leaves a district is in line for state funding, they kind of vault to the top if they need a school. For North Yarmouth, more than Cumberland is probably something to look at, um, but Cumberland has never done its due diligence, they've always fear-mongered not to. And you owe it to the residents to do it, it may be the worst solution ever. It absolutely could, it could absolutely be disastrous and bankrupt the town, but you don't know that. You also aren't prepared, if North Yarmouth leaves, to know what, where you would stand, where Cumberland would stand. Um, so I would encourage you, as I have in the past and will continue in the future, to look at all the options, which includes dissolution. Which looks at other partners, which we, in the past, we've looked at partnering with Falmouth or Yarmouth. Um, is it time to revisit that, or is anybody interested, who knows, we're, we're talking about fire and, and other, um, services? W- why not, we looked at a Casco Bay, um, joint district, um. We have a different town manager in charge, maybe the conversations go differently. But you owe it to us to look at dissolution, additional partners, or staying together, and doing the due diligence to show what we choose, whichever option that is. Is it the right one for the town, and to continue to look, look, because things evolve. This is not nineteen sixty-three, I believe it was, they're two very, very different towns, and we're still operating on the same system. Look at it. Um, in the negoti- renegotiating conversation, my understanding was the school district was there, which, all due respect to the school district. Have no business with being there, it's an agreement between Yarmouth and Cumberland, I mean, North Yarmouth, excuse me, North Yarmouth and Cumberland. Um, the school district is the entity we contract to run the district as it is now. Um, and the last thing I want to say, and I'm glad Jeff walked back in, um, welcome Jeff, I, I've been avoiding this. Um, a- and town politics in general, since my service on the CP committee. I welcome you, we are thrilled in West Cumberland to have some representation, and I urge you to hold a town hall at West Cumberland Community Center. Just to chat and answer questions and ask questions of us, and I would also encourage the town manager, now that you've been here a year, to please come as well. Not just about selling us the rotary and why it would be an awesome thing, but to talk and learn about our neighborhood and our concerns as well. Beyond what we vent about here.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Council discussion on this particular agenda item, and thank you all for sticking it out, you know, it's late. Anyone have any thoughts?
I got a few, but, so, I think a lot of good input tonight from, you know, everyone in the room. Um, you know, I'm, I'm new to this, so to my peers, I don't want you to think I'm Monday morning quarterbacking the process that. You folks have worked all hard on for the last six or eight months in budget period. You know, I, I just gotta say that I've lived here almost all my life, and I sit here tonight honestly because of this town and this school system. Um, this town's improved a lot over my lifetime compared to when I was a child. And, you know, I think we have some tough decisions ahead of us, uh, we can keep going on the current path, you know, we could push this through tonight. And cause a lot of pain to some citizens, right now, I think we're on an unsustainable path. You know, with what we talked about in the rough draft forum tonight, you know, two dollars here this year, two dollars this year. You know, you do that over four years, it's eight bucks, you know, five years, it's ten. You know, we, we need to come together and have some hard conversations, um. We, you know, we've talked about the school and the county and, and everything else, and, yeah, the school is the, the toughest, you know, toughest part of it. You know, it's, uh, it's the elephant in the room. Um. But, you know, I, I guess what I think that we can try to do, if, you know, and I guess this is just where my head is, is. You know, Bob, I'm with you, let's take another look, you know, maybe we can find something, maybe, maybe we can't, but at least let's try. We can't rewind the clock on the school budget, it's voted through, it's passed. But, you know, maybe I guess as we move forward next year, we try to give the citizens a better outline of what's coming on the town side. I'm sure there's some people that vote a school budget in because, you know, they don't understand all the other stuff that's coming down the road. You know, it's, it's kinda like you buy a house, and when it's new, everything's great, and then you get to that twenty-year mark, and you gotta get a furnace, and then twenty-five years, you gotta get a roof. Well, you know, we got roofs and furnaces, so to say, coming, maybe there are fire trucks and, and ambulances, but. If we get that information out and what the cost is, you know, I think we're gonna give the voters some better decision-making, and that may send the message that. Maybe the school doesn't wanna hear, so, um, you know, I, I guess where I am is I'd, I'd like to look around a little bit and see if we can't find something. You know, and, and try to, maybe we don't find anything, but at least, at least I think we owe it to the people in the room to try. And that's, those, those are my comments.
Um, kind of going back to what Bailey had mentioned earlier, as far as, given, yes, I know, our low percentage in all of this, and how we picked through the budget. Say we did find something, what is that value, is that actually adding to this on a decrease? And whether or not that is worth the time, I'm wondering, like, with large budget item, the fire department, yeah. And the per diems in the full-time, that is dictated by their contract, or is there even any wiggle room in that as far as, like, striking a considerable amount? Because if not, I don't recall anywhere else in the budget that there's flexibility that we already didn't look at. Are there positions that are vacant, that it could be stricken, I mean, realistically?
It's, it's pretty skinny, uh, where it's at, I mean, uh. I know we took a significant amount out of the per diem line, uh, this spring, uh, to do that. Uh, we've also looked at overtime as well, uh, tried to, tried to work on both those areas, on the fire department specifically. If the council directed me to try to find some amount, uh, or try to find a recommendation, uh, to do it, we could. Do a forensic look at it and try to find, you know, a quarter here, a nickel there, fifty cents, you know, and, um, this is all metaphorically speaking. If the council said that, you, you have to find X amount of dollars to make a significant change on it, then we would do everything in our power to follow council direction. And, uh, you know, it could be a combination of multiple different areas that we, that we would look at to, to find savings. I guess that's probably the best answer I could give versus specifically tailoring one department or, or others, I'd probably try to find a, uh, a way to, to mediate it.
Yeah, mainly I was just wondering if it's even possible to adjust the budget farther down for the fire department or police based on contract.
Yeah, ca- I don't know.
And things like that.
The council has approved the budget, so.
Right.
Um.
Yeah.
That action's already been taken, and the reconsider there, um.
Mm-hmm.
Just kinda got past that point in the program.
Yeah, that's a, I'm not trying to like lead the witness or anything, but that's kinda what I'm getting at, is like, we, we looked at this thing. We spent a lot of time looking through everything we could possibly do, within reason that wouldn't harm public safety to the community, and, you know, cutting positions and personnel. Um, I think the, the estimates being off, it sucks, um, and it kind of skewed everything higher than we expected, but. I don't think us taking a look at our budget is necessary right now, and I don't think it's an exercise I feel is worth doing. That's just me.
Yeah, that, that was kinda the same sentiment I was gonna say, I don't know that that's an effective use of our time. And I think, you know, there's a lot of conversation about some variables that impact, you know, how we get here, and I think it's important. From an introspective perspective, and Bob, I know I get on you about this all the time, but like, we can all talk about it. But understanding the role we play in championing things is really important, because I think we sit here and we have this conversation. And everybody feels some kind of way about it, and I have my own feelings, Bob has his own feelings, Tig. But it also takes someone on the council championing that and seeing it through, otherwise, we're never gonna see change, right? And I think, understanding what are those actionable things, picking a lane, and understanding, okay, maybe as a council, we're having a discussion during new business about what are those things? That we discussed during our council caucus that we wanna champion to move forward, but like, I don't wanna sit here on the dais again next year and say, we've made no. Impact or forward movement on what that joint sta- you know, the joint standing meeting on what the funding formula is. Because I don't disagree with Terry Maloney Kelly, I have ver- verbalized that myself in the joint standing committee. I think it's, whether we owe money to North Yarmouth or they owe money to us, it's, it is our obligation to understand what that dollar amount is, and to set a precedent for what that timeline is moving forward. However, I'm not on joint standing, so it's like, who is championing that to move those things forward? And how can we create accountability across the council to make sure those things are happening? Because otherwise, they're just not gonna happen, and we're gonna be in the same place next year. My goal is, I, finance is an interesting thing to me, and I would love to find ways to save more money, to make more money for the town, it's what I'm good at, right? So that is my priority, and like, I feel like we did an excellent job this year making sure that we were not in a place. To be contributing to the community in a poor way from a financial perspective, and I will continue to do that moving forward. But I just, I think it's, we can all give lip service, but like, we gotta walk the walk, you know, we gotta do, take action and, and find our role to ma- be able to move forward. I don't think holding this up is gonna do anything positive for us at this point in time, so, that's where I stand.
Mike, Bob.
The, the council can make drastic changes if they really want to.
Oh, I agree.
And, and, and we can bear the, the, uh, the wrath of the voters for doing that, and I don't think any of us here are, are, have any desire to do that. But what I think we have here in front of us is we've had some information delivered to us in the last few days that really brings home the fact that. These numbers are, are big, and they're going to be big for the next three, four, five years. And I think that we heard, we heard from concerned people about the impact that it, it's gonna be on them. And at some level, I agree with them, on another level, I think it's important to point out that everybody lives in a home that they can afford. Uh, and, and the tax implication affects them equally across the board, there are exceptions to all of that. Uh, and, uh, we, 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 we know what they are. Uh, I have a good friend of mine that was in the Lions Club with me, uh, passed away probably fifteen years ago, and he had a property that he was paying. Uh, twenty years ago, thirty thousand dollars a year was his tax bill, and he, you know, I was on the school board at the time, and he said, Bob, this, this is killing me, this is killing me. I said, well, yes, I can, I can see how it might, uh, but, to answer the question. I don't, uh, not so much concerned that we're wasting our time, but I think the exercise is important for Matt to go back and have another look. And for us to up or down it, um, and, there, there is not going to be a significant change, and anybody that expects to see a significant change is gonna be disappointed. There is, uh, what, what the important part is, is we are doing due diligence, which we did do all spring, uh, and we came up with a budget at the time. Knowing the numbers that we felt, that we knew then, today, they're a little different, and so that's why I would request that we have one more look at this. The challenge going forward is that conversation with the school, uh, you know. This is unsustainable for this community, because what I'm, what I'm seeing is a constraints that will be placed on us for the next three to five years about. And any, any initiatives that the town might wanna take, uh, and, uh, some of those are, are near and dear to my heart, and they may be near and dear to somebody else's heart, or, or they may be different. But, uh, when, when you, when you do the, the math here, and it's not hard to do, uh, you know, uh. The, these are, uh, significant increases in tax burden over the next five years, so, uh, I think that it's, uh, it's, it's the right thing for us to do to take another look.
Are you suggesting we look at, take another look at the budget, or at this, at the tax rate?
It's the same thing.
But are you sug- we've approved our budget, so are you suggesting that we should go back?
I'm saying we reexamine the budget.
Uh.
Matt comes back and says, I've looked through it, and these are my recommendations, that we don't change anything, that, um, will understand behind it, if he comes back and said, and I've. I'm not opposed to the finance committee, uh, joining that conversation, so, yeah, it's, it's up to the council how they wanna move forward with that.
Denise?
I wasn't on the council at the time, but this situation is reminding me of when the fire department came and appealed. For two additional positions in the midnight hour, like, the eleventh hour of the other budget, and the council basically had to make a decision after a decision had already been made. And not judging that event or whatever, but this is like a last-minute thing based on concerns that we've been hearing forever, like, this isn't new. Um, if we wanted to look back and trim it again, we could've done that during the budget process, and I feel like this is. I'm not gonna talk about, like, no, I'll just avoid that, cause that's irrelevant, but I think what we can do is do what we can control. First of all, educating the community that, cause a lot don't realize, people I've talked to, they think the town has oversight over the school budget, no, we do not. Your mechanism of making a difference is that budget vote during the referendum, that is your say, like, use that, that is your tool. A lot of people don't realize that is what that's for, and if you say no, it doesn't mean the sky's gonna fall, it's just, they have to go back and look at it again until it's approved. It happens all the time in towns, it goes back, and it goes back again until the people decide that this is sufficient. Second, I've mentioned it before, and I don't know if it needs to be during our next budget process, or if we can do this sooner, but if we're keeping the bags. I want us to put into place bags at the food pantry, for those who are eligible for food pantry, they should get free bags. Um, additionally, this is why we, I, at least, voted in favor of extending TIF one so that we could throttle. So these are the things that are in our control outside of this, that we can do and should do in the meantime, is finding ways that we can lower the burden on people who are disproportionately affected by this. In other ways. in other ways rather than simply looking at the tax rate. Because there are other ways that we can make a difference to those who need it that isn't the tax rate. And also, yes, throttling the TIF we need and like having a spreadsheet that puts things in in a way to where we can see if we divert this much to the general fund, how will that affect the other formulas, and is it a net gain or not? So, yeah, again, I don't agree with going back and not moving forward on this tonight, but I think there are other things that, like, me and others have brought up like ideas on how we can lessen this burden, and they kind of just like float away and they're not like spoken about again. But I will keep talking about it, like, because it's like, put the idea out and then nothing really comes of it. So at what point do we look at bags, at the food pantry? At what point are we putting together the, like, decision tree on TIF throttling? And like, where do we build up these tools that we can have internally to decide when it's a good idea or not financially? So, yeah, I'll just keep bringing that up until we have some sort of meeting or action on it. But that's, that's what that is. I think we should move forward with this and then do what we can otherwise to help those who need it.
Mike has something to say?
Yeah, I'm not in favor. You guys know how much I hate kicking the can down the road. We've got a budget in front of us. I spent, as you guys did, three months, four months, every week, looking at this budget line by line by line. There's no fat in this budget. Where our increase is around fifty-four cents, that's it. So we're not, we don't come in with a two-dollar increase. The school owns this. Let's call a spade a spade. The school owns this increase. If anybody should go back and look at cuttings to school, they, they come in every, every single budget year, and they think when their budget passes by fifty-two to forty-eight percent or fifty-point-five to forty-nine-point-five, they think it's a win. It's not a win. They've divided this community. They're, they're, they're responsible for what's going on with people looking at the school budget, talking about dissolving the SAD. The school's responsible for that, not the town. So, I'm happy, I hate paying taxes. You guys know me, I, I'm probably the most conservative person up here when it comes to spending taxpayers' money, but this is a good, responsible town budget. And the school owns, the aggravation here, the school owns, not us. So, I'm not in favor of delaying this, so I want to take a vote tonight.
Okay, I'll let you do, I have a feeling, two things. One, I'm, I'm also not in favor of delaying this. I think that we did look so closely, we went down line by line. And I think that the two bats point, and I want to be so clear on this. Our town manager is a former tax assessor. We have a really talented tax assessor. I have a lot of trust in you, and I have a lot of trust in Clint. And when you say that you went back and looked at the, for the entire weekend, and you came back with ways that I think you pushed to the max of what the allowable rates are, like, I, I'm not sure that, is the, like, just hand over heart, is there wiggle room? Like, is there, is there, I imagine that if there was something else you could have done, you probably would have done it, because I know how seriously you take this. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's accurate, it's a good question, and it's, I mean, like I said earlier, if the council said, "Find a way to save X amount of dollars," we, my staff and I will find a way to do it. We did it for, like, as Council Reed said, we did it for four months this spring and tried to come in as best as we could, and we're there. But if the council said, "Find a way to do it," we will do it. That's just, that's, that's what we're in the business of. But we've tried to come up with the best that we had, and this is, it's a weird function of math that we ran into this year, and it's one that I don't anticipate. I, quite frankly, I haven't run into it in thirty years of doing this. You know, as an assessor or a council member or a select board member or just a participant at large. So it's just, it was just a weird, weird math thing that, that's bit us in the backside.
No, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to also just, Denise, yes, throttle? Yes, Bat and I talked last week about, because we've got TIF eight that we can also throttle, and we've talked about how to establish a process with the TIF committee and the finance committee so that we're looking at that early, right? Early and often. And so that has not gone on deaf ears, and we just established our committees and we haven't had.
I'm on both.
I know, and we haven't had a chance to kind of fully, fully talk about it. But I also think, so yes, we're going to hit that, and they will be very much in tandem. Because I think that, looking, and the whole point of the throttling, and Bill Shane like hammered this into, I think, all of us, is that we knew eventually that there was going to be a new school, and being able to throttle was going to give us a lot of flexibility to bear some really, really difficult years. And we know that that's coming. And I think that it is about conversation. And yes, if someone wants to take on looking at dissolving, so if someone wants to champion that, as Bailey is big on, "Take your task, take your assignment, go and do it," you know, I think that someone can take that on and do that. Like, absolutely, they should, if that is what they want to do. I think for me, being incredibly intentional and being highly communicative with my very favorite person, Kim Vine, who's sitting in the audience today, who is in the weeds and I know cares so much, I think it's really important that we are also continuing to communicate, maybe communicating a little bit more than we have been. Because even if it did go down the road of a dissolution, that's not going to happen next year, probably, right? Like, I think it would be a sizable economic activity that has to be kind of taken through. So, in the meantime, what are the tools that we have in our tool belt? Like TIF one, like TIF eight, like talking with our neighbors more, like, you know, looking at cost sharing? What are the things that we can be doing to move things forward and be as fiscally responsible as we can? I, I, again, I think that we should move this forward. I trust Matt, I, I know what we all went through with that budget. We were so intentional, I don't, where do we start, like eight percent and ended below three?
I think it was higher than that.
We started out at seventeen point nine percent.
Oh, we started at seventeen, and so.
From the staff level, and to get it down to, yeah, we came in at like eight or nine at the start. Madam Chair, if I had one other thing, if I could insert. The, the other attribute of things that I think council's expressed, and Council Douglas in particular has, is, is growing and diversifying the pie.
Yeah.
It's critical, you know, for us as staff people to find ways to get investment of non, let's just say expenditure-driving, investment in the community, and, and trying to find ways to grow other forms of revenue outside of property tax. And that's a challenge that we try to undertake on a daily basis. So we, that's something we, we will aggressively pursue.
I heard the Red Sox are going to sponsor. No, okay, never mind. Sorry, Mike, did you have something to?
Oh, just, Matt, you brought us a responsible budget. I know you met and met with your department heads, and it often put you at odds with them. But you brought us a responsible budget. There's only so much you can do. I mean, if, if, if we're going to go back and look at this, let's, let's say what it is. You're going to cut a policeman, you're going to cut an EMT, you're going to cut a fireman. You know, you're not going to buy a new ambulance. You're going to, you're going to, you're going to cut basic services. You know, our state rep was here tonight? You know, she, the biggest line item you have is personal services, wages. She is responsible, as are the people that voted, a one percent increase in those costs of services when, when they voted this family, paid family leave, which, we're a collective bargaining town. It won't help any of our employees, but we're all paying for what she wanted to do. That, all that stuff adds up, all these, all these extra, you know, this, this new program, that new program. You know, she wants to help us cut the taxes. She talked about the addition to taxes after taxes after taxes. But you had to live with that one percent increase in personal services, and you put it into your budget, yet you still came back below three percent. So, you, you produced a good budget, Matt, and.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of bringing this thing forward tonight.
My, Council Reed's, my team and I did. We had, I had, you know, multiple department heads who worked the tail off to get us to that point, so.
Yep, sure did.
It's not Matt's budget, it's Town and Carbon, and so that's, but they did a great job. A lot of proud, a lot of pride in them, thank you.
I guess, Matt, just, just for everyone who's watching, you know, hypothetically, let's just say you went back and looked and found a hundred thousand dollars. What's the effect on the tax rate? Because trying to find much more than that, I know is going to be tough.
Couple three cents?
Yeah, okay.
Right, right in that range.
There's no question that Matt did a good job, and that we all, all did due diligence. On, on some level, the, the gauntlet has been thrown down, and you, you say, this is a, this is a message to the school board. We took the extra time to take another look. I'm, I'm happy passing the budget, but I want it to be understood that some of us are, were willing to take an extra look. And, you know, if it, it's pennies, it's pennies, but the message needs to be sent, you know. We're, we have heard the taxpayers, we have heard the people, we have taken that extra look, and it, it didn't amount to squat, but this is, this is where, where we stand. So, you know, I'll, I'll join you wherever you want to go with this. But, and, and it's not a reflection on who did a better job, but I know that the communication across the street and this side of the street because of the next four or five years is crucial. And how, how that plays out is, is going to make or break us all.
Can I just say one thing? I think I respect everyone's opinions, but one of the things I find challenging in the dynamics across the SAD and, and us here is like, we're operating under two different operations here, right? We're, we're trying to operate a municipality. They're trying to serve the community from an educational perspective. They're not looking at it the same way that we are. And I don't know enough about their budgetary process, but like, I think it's a little bit unfair for us to just lean into this narrative that like, it's, you know, they're not doing the due diligence of following X, Y, and Z the way we are. I think we need to respect our budget process and respect their budget process. Like, that's their budget process. If you want to have a communication with them about how they're operating that, you can go to their meetings, you can stand up during public comment, you can have conversations with people on the board. But I think it's really challenging for me when we sit here and we make it this whole conversation about, "The school board's done this," or "The school board's done that," it just feels like an ineffective use of our time. We need to focus on what we can do to generate revenue to be able to move forward. I feel like this is not a good use of time. And I know I always lean back into that, but it's like, I don't, like, I respect that people have frustration with it, but I feel really strongly that we did everything in our power, regardless of where numbers were at the time, to run a really lean budget. And I have faith in Matt. The only other option that we could potentially have a conversation about is like, restrategizing capital improvement projects, but is that really a conversation we want to have at this point in time? Probably not. I think we need to look at other opportunities to generate revenue for a long-term strategic plan. I don't, I don't know that the short-sighted funds that we would find in this exercise would be worth our time. That's my opinion.
Madam Chair, a hundred thousand would be roughly about four and a half to five cents. So, just, I, I didn't want to just, I didn't want to play it ahead, I needed a second or two to do the math, Council Moholic, so.
I'll give you a motion.
I move, sorry. Oh, yeah. I move to set the municipal tax rate for fiscal year 2026 for twenty-five, eight, twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
Second. We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, Brenda, who I hope is not still watching. All right, next up is twenty-five dash zero eight eight. Oh, sorry, next up is twenty-five dash zero eight seven. To consider an act on setting the rates at which interest will be paid for delinquent taxes and to consider applying tax payments to the oldest unpaid taxes. Now, keep me honest, again, Mr. Manager, this is what we do year over year, and we are capped by the state of Maine at a maximum rate of seven and a half percent, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair. This year, the, the legislature in their infinite wisdom sent the, the maximum interest rate at seven and a half percent. The council for the past few years has set that at four percent.
Around four percent, okay.
And, and so we, we generally apply that, and, but that, they set the maximum, but you can do anything from that point lower.
Would anyone in the public like to comment on this agenda item before we move to council discussion on it? Come on, yep, come on up. Was that a joke? Okay, that was a joke, okay, wow. It's comedy hour over here.
I've been up since four AM.
Oh, no. I got up at five.
I know.
Sleeping in. All right, then I will close public comment, and we will move into a council discussion on that.
And we had been, we'd kind of hovered around four percent for, it was four years? Less, nine years?
Four.
Four years, thank you.
Sorry, four. I am in favor of either keeping it as is or even potentially lowering it, depending on how often we collect this, what the incentive is to repay if you're late, depending on the percentage, knowing that we just passed a rate that is higher than we expected.
I have a question. But I don't know if I'm allowed to ask it, but I'm going to. So hypothetically, if there was someone with unpaid taxes of, say, I don't know, thirty, thirty thousand dollars, and they were giving us five hundred dollar payments, how often is that happening?
Infrequently.
Infrequently, okay.
The town's, the town has a, a very good collection rate. When, there are, there are a few properties that have accumulated a significant amount in delinquent taxes, which we try to work with them. But generally, the, once it gets to a certain number, if you make a hundred, a hundred payment here or five hundred payment there, it's not going to offset the, the growth, like making a minimum payment on your, on your credit card, so. But we try to work with those folks, and ultimately, you know, the town took a policy years ago that they weren't going to basically kick people out of their homes.
Right.
And, and do that, so. I'd recommend keeping it at your four percent that you'd have for, for years. It still adds up, and I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a fair number, it's not the maximum. But it seems like if, if that's been the council, the town's position for multiple years, it's probably not a bad thing to continue.
I respect your opinion, Matt. However, to Denise's point. Mike, can you get it together? Respectfully, I think we should go up to five percent, just out of principle for the shifts that we've had to make for the community. And to Denise's point, the unexpected incurred expenses, I get that that doesn't necessarily impact this, but I just think it makes it equitable, or it can give me a sense of equity across, across the, across the board.
You're saying go up?
Yeah.
Down. Oh, no, she said up. Because I said, "Keep it as is or go down."
Oh, I said go up. Why?
False.
It feels equitable.
This is to set the delinquent interest rate on someone who isn't able to pay their taxes. So I was saying, "Lower it," so that if you're having real trouble, you're being punished slightly less as you were repaying.
Yeah.
It's the literal, literal opposite.
Council Thorsten, to your point, though, something to consider, is if someone's in real trouble, they can always apply for a hardship abatement.
That's true. And I think I said this. That's true. And I think I said the same thing at one point, you said the same thing.
Their mechanisms are placed.
I know, and I forget about that a lot.
Yeah.
And we've done that.
There is, yeah, there is the opportunity for relief and, and you know, it's not, it's not a consistent relief, but it's one where a person can, can do that. Other times you, you may find that there are diff, there are different conditions for each situation, I guess, has been my experience, and that's, just to say, we're all, we're all different on, on God's green earth, so, so are tax liens.
You're such a nerd.
So five percent would be my vote.
Yeah, Matt, uh, Mike, sorry, sorry.
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it at four percent.
My god, Mike.
Why stick it to them? That's what you wanna do? You wanna, you wanna give it another? They can't pay their taxes, they can't pay their taxes.
I'm just trying to find us a dollar.
Just go to the max.
And, uh, our, we're really talking chump, chump change here anyways.
Whitney, you're not allowed to leave yet.
We're not, our collection rate's so high anyways, we're, it's, it's chump change. So, I say keep it at four percent.
Wow, Mike.
Compassion.
I'm comfortable with four percent.
Let's do four percent.
Really?
Four for four, four for four, four. Gotta learn to count to four.
All you need is a motion.
Take a motion if there is one.
I move set an interest rate of four percent for delinquent real and personal property taxes with FY 2026. You had further ordered that all payments for delinquent real and personal property be applied to the oldest unpaid taxes.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just that Bob's sick of all our nonsense, he's just ready to go.
All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, more. Okay.
Year-end transfers.
Sorry, uh, twenty-five dash zero eight eight to authorize FY 2025 end of year transfers. Uh, I know you've been up since five AM, but can I punt to the Chair of the Finance Committee to talk about this? Okay, I'm gonna punt to the Town Manager to talk about this.
We have our lovely intelligence.
Ravishing Finance Director, Helene Di Bartolomeo. Here she comes.
Let the record show that our Finance Director was here before me this morning, so. She's had, she's had a day.
Did we ever think we'd see the day? Wow.
Good evening.
Loving those low lights.
So, um, every year, uh, what we try to do is look at where we ended the year. Part of your responsibility as council is to ensure that, um, if we go over budget, um, on our expenses by the department, that you give us the authorization to allow us to go over. And then the second part of that is also, um, during the budget process, we ta, talked about some things we were gonna put aside so we wouldn't affect the tax rate. Those items are what's before you. Those were brought to the Finance Committee to review. On July first, we looked those over and actually, I think we took, we took one of them off of that, that was the, um, the, uh,
Charger.
The charger in stations, so we did not bring that forward. But all these items were items that we discussed that through, through the budget process of twenty-six that we didn't wanna put to, depend, and depending where we were gonna be as far as year-end. So, and we prioritize that list, and based on where we ended the year or where we're estimated right now, I'm still working on, um, FY 25's year-end, but it's looking really, really well. So, um, you know, confident that we'll stay within, um, putting a million dollars towards our fund balance for 2025.
And that total was five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two?
Correct.
Right.
With two items pending, depending on whether or not the library needed, truly needed the money for the carpet and, um, whether or not we wanted to move forward with the cameras because we were gonna do a three-month check-in on where we were with the bags.
With the bags, okay.
So just for, so then we'd be looking at September checking in on the bags?
Yeah, probably, probably towards the end of September, we'll see what our, our revenue looks like in comparison to anticipated after the first quarter's complete.
Is that three months of?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, July, August, and September.
Oh, I know, but the, we haven't even started the automated.
No, but the bag sales have continued.
Yeah, we were wanting to make sure our bag sales did not drop. No, I know, but like, is that gonna give us a true reflection because we don't have the automated per, there, there's still someone that looks right now, right? When they pick up the bags and it's August, you know what I mean? It hasn't actually rolled out, started yet, so is that gonna be an accurate reflection after a month?
We may, we may take a look at that and see if it, if it doesn't, if it's inconclusive, we may wanna wait another month, like, maybe look three months after, uh, the pickup begins to see all that is, and we can flex that one way or the other to see.
Just like get a true reflection of what it looks like. Yes. Do you have an idea in mind on what that would look like as far as non-compliance? Because we just had like this really sweet composting presentation, what if a bunch of people start composting? And like get Garbage to Garden subscriptions, and then the back sales go down? Just like, is it gonna be based on also like checking our tonnage if it's staying the same?
Yeah.
Maybe have a ratio there?
Yeah, there's a lot of elements that we would take a look at on that, on that side of it.
Good deal.
We, the town does have pretty good subscription even at this point with Garbage to Garden based on, uh, you know, I know with my travels, they, they're here about the same time that I'm commuting to work, so, yeah, they have, there's a lot of green buckets out that they, that they do, so it's been, you've got a good subscription rate already, so I think that, that may have already stabilized.
Okay.
But we can hope that it, that it improves.
Yes.
Um, any other questions for either our ravishing Finance Director or our Town Manager? Who's also ravishing?
You're ravishing too, Madam Chair.
You're all ravishing.
I'd like to make an HR complaint.
I'll give you a motion.
But did you have something, Bob?
We talked about, uh, next month at the twenty-five, looking at a,
Solar.
Some money towards the lighting and the solar.
Yeah, uh, uh, Council Bill, thank you for that question. So, in the current, well, the budget that we just completed, the, um, streetlights were, that was the last payment, was in the last fiscal year for that budget, so that's now been complete. So what we budget now is, uh, is the amount we offset for reserves for replacement and repairs. So that's, I think that's roughly thirty-seven thousand. And so that now is going, we're basically paying ourselves forward, uh, on that side of it, so. So we finished off that debt service, that's done as of July, as of June thirtieth, so that's, that's a good part. So what we have in this year is, like I said, reserves for replacements and repairs, uh, for us going forward. And then, uh, next month, we, we, the council will receive on the, at the eleventh, a presentation from, uh, revision, regarding specifically the, the buy-down of the solar field out back. And town's acquisition of that and potentially expanding, uh, the solar field to, to do that, so. That'll be, uh, so, at that point in time, if it, if, you know, if it looks like the numbers are decent to, to do that purchase outright and get that done, then, uh, we'll have a financing plan for that, uh, to try to find out how to get that done. But that, instead of making a, a transfer at this point to look at solar field acquisition or things like, outside of what we've already budgeted in there, we'll, we'll look at that as the, as the larger picture. But that's, you know, previews of coming attractions.
I'll give you a motion. I move to authorize the Town Manager, do I have to do both of these, Matt? To transfer excess end-of-year operating revenues and interdepartmental operating balances to close out all departmental budgets. And further, I move to authorize the Town Manager to transfer up to five hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars from end-of-year excess revenues for projects approved by the Finance Committee, and that any additional excess revenues be applied to the end-of-year fund balance. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Wow, thanks for joining me tonight.
Excellent.
You're welcome.
There's a motion and a second. Call for, oh, is there any discussion on the motion? Apart from that snark? All right, call for a vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Okay, um, before we move into executive session, we will start with new business. I'm gonna start all the way down at the right with Councilor Mahalik.
All right, so, put the twenty dollars towards the food pantry.
Thank you, sir.
And, um, basically, uh, you know, the last couple of meetings, I held my comments to myself in the interest of time, but I'm holding up too many of them, so sorry, they're all coming out tonight.
Oh, my god.
Um, I'll make them quick though, Bailey. Couple of quick things, um, you know, I know we've talked about accidents at Route 100 in Skilns and over the weekend, and notice there's no stop bars there.
Like, um.
Yeah, the white lines. Like, I mean, I don't know if it's us or the state, but that was my ingenious observation Sunday morning.
I'll give you that. It was a ten out of ten.
Yeah. Paving, you know, I just, I just wanted to comment on that. There's a couple of things I know a little bit about, and paving's one of them. Um, you know, I think we did a really good job of that. We spent the additional money to grind the butt joints. You know, that's gonna extend the life of the new pavement. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I ran into a couple of our firefighters and they just gave me a demonstration, the new ambulance. And I just, I was impressed of it from when my days in the fire department, you know, it was expensive purchase, but, uh, you know, one of the big things about it is the ability to re-chassis the actual ambulance part, um, part of it, so I think that's a long-term saving, so it's money well-spent in the community. And really, that's, that's all I'll torture you with for tonight, Bailey.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. I mean, you'll have to tell me more about this demo, but.
I will, I will.
Councilor Thorson.
I'd like to hear more about what grinding a butt joint is.
You wanna know about pavement? We can talk for hours.
I'll Google it, but I'm just a little afraid of what might pop up. So I prefer to just have a one-on-one. Well, I mean, I kinda went through all this like insane scribbling already, cause that's what I do. I don't even know at this point. I'm sorry, I was gonna say something, then I forgot. The end. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Aren't you, Denise?
It's good to be a squeaky wheel, cause we only have like three of the, three wheels, so squeak all you want. If we had more, I'd appreciate it.
That's it. I think you're great. Councilor Vale?
Thanks.
Uh, new committee assignment, uh, was a housing authority, uh, last week. Very group of dedicated people on that committee. Learned a few things, uh, first and foremost, what a shortage of housing we have for seniors. And we have no transitional housing at all in this community. Anyways, um, the needs are, are great, our resources, resources are small, but we have a group of dedicated people on staff and volunteers that are moving that along and, uh, anyways, it was, uh, it was, it was a good meeting, good group of people.
Councilor, I'm not awake anymore, Douglas.
I got nothing.
Councilor Eads?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, tonight before the, uh, council meeting, I attended the, uh, wake for Bill Buhal. Grew up in his Cumberland, um, his sister Rhonda Small, and Dave still live in Cumberland. We knew his dad really well, Wayne. Anyways, uh, Bill was a thirty-eight years on the benefit police department. Passed away of cancer and my condolences to him, he and his family. Matt took a lot of my thunder away from, uh, the All-Stars, but I've been, I had a whole list of stuff I've been talking with Miles Hunt and his mother-in-law and I wanna get my facts straight tonight, but I'll just leave it. Whitney, I wanna wish you guys good luck. We'll be thinking about you and go get them. Last but not least, and it's way too late to go into a big discussion about it, but I was saddened to hear about Rye's closing. It's a big part of our community that closed. I, I purposely, for the last couple of years, have not gone there. While we were in discussions on, um, you know, increasing their hours because I didn't wanna give the neighbors any more fuel to complain about me or anybody that supports. So, I didn't go, but I went Friday night and the place was packed and I got hit up by a couple of citizens in town about why we, we didn't do more. I reached out to a friend of mine who owns a very successful restaurant in Yamath. And I asked him about, you know, what, what is the scoop, and he basically said, look, a restaurant, you can live and die by the number of paper cuts you have. You can die by a hundred paper cuts. Um, and the success, success of a restaurant is eliminating these paper cuts one at a time. And that includes an extra hour here. We heard the people from Dara show up and talk about how important that one hour was so they could flip tables. That is so important to these restaurants. We didn't do it, and shame on us for not doing it. We can't control everything, we can't control his health issues, we can't control a lot of little stuff, but we, we could've controlled that and we didn't. It's a shame that my family and all the families that were there this weekend, can't, there's no longer a place for them to bring their kids after a, after a football game, after a basketball game. We no longer have that in Cumberland Center. I think it's a real shame and I, when we approved their liquor license a couple of weeks ago, I looked, I, I wanted to look at what the percentage of alcohol versus food, and they're the lowest of anybody in town. It's food, it's families coming, um, to eat. It's not people sitting sucking down booze, uh, waiting till the last hour. It's people wanting to go, um, to someplace in the community, and, and we've lost that, so. I don't know what's gonna go on. I'm very thankful to Toby and Simone, uh, they add a lot to this community, they, they donate a lot to this community. They are sorely gonna be missed. I hope whoever buys that, if we can get a buy, if they can get a buyer, um, has half their community spirit and, um, it's, 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 it's just a sh, shame of a, a town with, uh, going on nine thousand people, doesn't have a, a place to, uh, a place for people to go on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, and, you know. We let them down and, and shame on us, so. And I know this issue's at the comp committee. Uh, I hope you guys come up with so, some recommendation on ours, but, um, it would be nice if we resolved this issue before the new owners came in and gave them a fast start, so. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Vice Chair, Eads? I had some self-reflection, uh, for sure, around the closing of Rye's Pizza and, um, I talked with Matt a little bit about it because, um, you know, and I think that the dying by a thousand paper cuts is just such a cogent point, right? And, you know, Cumberland being certified business-friendly and what could we have done, um, you know, differently? Not only for them, but also, you know, for Dara and the other, um, you know, the TCD, um, the survey results came back for the comp plan and the number one area that the residents would like to see for growth is the TCD, which I thought to be wild and really interesting. That said, um, I went back and kind of looked at everything that we had done with Rye's Pizza. I looked at, you know, at one point, we had a community meeting, we kicked it to the planning board. The planning board came back with nothing, and then we kind of came together by consensus and said that we would give it to the comp plan. And then I looked back at my emails, emails from April, and I had emailed Steven Moriarty, who is the Chair of the Comp Plan Committee, and said, can we make sure that the Comp Plan Committee looks into this? Because what our amazing manager pointed out to me again is that our comp plan is the foundation for our zoning and they have to be in concert with each other, so. We will get an answer, and we will, I think, have some more very difficult dialogues, especially in the TCD, which is, you know, a very difficult balance of commercial and residential because of the way that it's set up. And so, we will come to a, a, a res, or they will come to us with recommendations. That is an item I personally want to make sure is seen through, um, and not just for the TCD. I think that we should be looking at it in all zones because I find it a little bit strange that it, you could have a twenty-four-hour rusty lantern in West Cumberland and you have something that's wildly different in the TCD, and I understand that they're different parts of town, but it would be good to take a whole, a holistic look so that we can be strategic and, and make sure that everything makes sense, so. Um, that's all I had, um, on the new business side of things, except for Denise. I think your idea about trash bags in the food pantry is great, very in line with the spirit of brush dump passes for those over the age of sixty-five, so, um, that is something that I would love to see on an agenda that we could possibly talk about. And I don't know what necessary action would be, but we can figure that out. And if there's ever anything that anyone wants to, like, like just bang me over the head and be like, take, put this on the agenda and we'll get it on the agenda, so don't feel like, um, you know, um, I can also be more accountable to making sure that we're following things through. and we'll get it on the agenda, so don't feel like, um, you know, um, I can also be more accountable to making sure that we're following things through, um, as Bailey Douglas has hounded into me, so. Um, that's it from me, I think we, uh, have nothing else to say until we, uh, move into executive session, right? Uh, which I think we'd need a motion for. And our darling members of the public and our Finance Director, thank you so much for being here, we're going to have to kick you out soon, or right now.
Go home, get some sleep.
Go home, get some sleep. What? Good man.
I just want to say, if we were to hold, like, all their really good job on the subject, there's nothing to take out of it.
There isn't.
And, you know, having gone through three different towns' budgets, this was the best, and I said that a number of times, because you guys hammered this, and I'm proud of you, I really am, I mean, it was awesome to sit here and listen, and watch you go through it, and I think, more than anything, I hope the school department, all those conversations, like, got the point, it's, things are happening, and they just, we could keep me aware of it, they just can't, you just can't keep them on like this, so, that's all, I, I hope she was listening, because we're coming to another fun year, anyway, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. We need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, I move to recess to executive session, pursuant to Title I, MR, MR SA 4056C, Negotiation of Real Property.
I'll give you a second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, are we, does that, is that? Make sure we're off camera.
Yep.
Sarah and Sean, if you would, thank you.